All right, thank you and welcome everybody. The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Present.
Alderman Colder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Stevens. Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Here.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Present.
Alderwoman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Todd.
Here.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Mohammed.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vicaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Good morning, present.
Good morning. Alderman Con. Twenty-five present.
The quorum being present, we are just so blessed today to have with us none other than Pastor Ruth Booker. A pastor that I call my sister and it's just such a great surprise to have her here to lead us today in prayer. She's also Mavis Thompson's cousin. Pastor Booker, we're in your hands.
Heavenly Father, God of this great universe, here it is once more again, you have allowed us to wake up on your work of lists and for this we are grateful. We praise you and we honor you for thinking of us once more again. No one is preparing us for a funeral, but we are able to see each other. So right now we're glad to be seen and not viewed. And as we go on in this meeting, we ask you to allow unity and understanding in this meeting to abide. We know some people will have different opinions, but when it all boiled down, let it come together and get an understanding where St. Louis will be better and in a better mode of business, of situations, of crisis. We ask you to allow, even if we disagree, let's not become disagreeable. We ask you for blessings upon this great president, President R. Marie, that has worked tirelessly for years. We ask you for covering for him and his lovely family. Then we ask you for every last Alderwoman and Alderman to be blessed, God. In this situation, we are asking you right now for guidance. And we ask you for peace among them and unity. That's what we need. And we're not going to stop, but we're going to pause and ask you to bless the Ukrainians, Lord. We're not going to be so selfish that we will leave them out. And we ask you right now to bless this meeting to be in a progressive mode. And we glorify you that when it comes down and it's all over, things will be done. People will be placed in the places that need to be and the business will be in order. We ask you for any personal vendetta to remove it right now in the name of Jesus, we pray. And we glorify you in your messless name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen.
And Pastor, I didn't know if you wanted to say something about Women's Month? I know you said something earlier.
Yes, I would like to wish all the women in St. Louis, it's Women's Month. And we need to be acknowledging, we're just acknowledging because sisterhood needs to be stronger than what it is. And we just acknowledging it. It's so honored to see when sisters come together. So it's our month and we're acknowledging all these brilliant women from the mayor to the Alderwomen, to everything. We're going to just, and to the test collector, this is not an easy job you do. And I get up and I pray every morning for God's blessing because even though they're away and people are away, this is our local and charity begins at home. So since I'm in St. Louis, I pray, and women, you ought to commend yourself and pat yourself on the back for an outstanding job that you have done in the city of St. Louis. And blessings be upon you. I pray God's blessings and his favor.
All right, let's give Pastor Booker a round of applause and for all the women. I know the board could not function without all the women on the board. Thank, thank you so much Pastor Booker. We, we appreciate you and we're looking forward to you coming back sometime. My sister, you have a great day. I know you have a busy day ahead of you.
Thank you, and you can call on me anytime and I will make myself available.
All right, thank you Pastor. It's also John, you know, our resident pastor, John Watson Jr.'s birthday. Let's give him a round of applause.
Oh, happy birthday.
Those volunteers for us for how many years now? And under special order, they were going to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar while we're doing that, an announcement. So a bunch of Aldermen have been reaching out to me about co-sponsoring the Board Bill eighty-two as amended. That's the Northside Funding Bill that also has ADA, it's ADA and Northside Corridors. So please let the clerk know because I wasn't able to get to everybody before today. It was just busy night last night, or you can put it in the, in the chat screen there for the clerk and then she'll handle it. All right, all along from nineteenth. Record now on the motion for our courtesy resolutions, resolutions calendar.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move that we adopt, adopt our courtesy resolution calendar for today.
Second.
Move by Alderman from nineteenth and I think it was second by Alderman.
Fourth.
From the fourth. All right. Resolution number two twenty-one, Alderman from twenty-seven.
Yes, Mr. President and Board of Aldermen, I am highly honored to recognize for Women History Month, Ms. Mavis Thompson, and she has been in my eyes for a long time and I have been watching her. And one thing about Mavis Thompson, every time you see her, she has a big smile on her face. And so she, she never is negative. She's always a positive. I see her at meetings and stuff and so I wanted to recognize her and I wanted to ask if the clerk could please read the resolution for me.
Madam Clerk, can you please, please read Resolution two twenty-one?
Resolution two twenty-one honoring Mavis T. Thompson Esquire. Whereas Mavis, I'm sorry, Mavis T. Thompson Esquire was born and raised in the city of St. Louis and still resides in her childhood home in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood. And whereas she graduated from Lutheran North High School where she was recently inducted into the Hall of Fame. And whereas Mavis received her bachelor degree in nursing and law degree from the University of Missouri. Mavis was the first African-American female to receive the citation of merit, the school of nursing highest award. She is also featured in the Gaines after Floyd Gaines display in the law school. And whereas she is a graduate of the JFK School of Government at Harvard. She has served as the president of the National Bar Association, leading attorneys and judges worldwide. And whereas she has practiced as a nurse, including prenatal clinician, OB-GYN services at St. Louis Regional Hospital and as an adjunct clinical instructor at St. Louis University of Nursing. And whereas her legal career included public defender, municipal prosecutor, assistant attorney general for Missouri Medicaid Fraud Control Unit and serving on the Appeals Tribunal for the Missouri Division of Employment Security. And whereas she is very active in the Mount Herald Missionary Baptist Church, serving as a Sunday School teacher and a senior status member of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. And currently serving on the Board of Legal Services for Eastern Missouri. And whereas Mavis made history as the first African-American female to hold two citywide elected positions, circuit clerk and now serving as license collector since two thousand and thirteen. Mavis enjoys international travel and is a mentor to many. She lives by her motto, each one must teach one. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations during Women's History Month to recognize the many accomplishments and achievements of Mavis T. Thompson and her many contributions to our community. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy that it may be presented to her at a time and placed deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this eleven day of March twenty twenty-two by the Honorable Pamela Boyd, Alderwoman of the twenty-seventh ward.
Right.
Thank you so much. Does Mavis, you have anything you want to say?
We'll bring her up at the end. We have to.
Okay.
You, you first and then, then we have a bunch of Aldermen and we'll, we'll bring Mavis up at the end.
Okay, the Aldermen, they can speak because a lot of them know her more so in years than I know her. And so I, I'm pretty sure they're going to have some things to say.
Okay, Alderwoman from the first. You're muted. Alderwoman, you're muted.
I'm muted, I'm not muted.
There you go.
Okay. Good morning. I'll turn it up some, okay? I'm usually loud enough, so I usually have mine turned down. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board and Madam License Collector. How are you this morning?
Great.
It's an honor for me to first add that my name be added to the resolution.
Would you like to make a motion, let it go in bank?
I always try to leave that for Joe Vicaro. I don't like to step on people's niche that they do and that's usually what he does. So I stay out of the way as the Alderwoman from the nineteenth says, I stay in my own lane. So is, he usually does that, then it stops and so I would do that, but I, I want to give that him, give him that pleasure, okay?
Okay.
I just have my own.
And make that motion.
Um, but anyway, I think this is great that we are honoring the, the license collector. I did an oversight several years ago when I did the comptroller, the, the treasurer, current mayor and the who did that, what's the, hmm, the city, not that the city councilor, but the who, Kim Gardner, who is
Circuit Attorney.
Circuit Attorney, thank you very much. So I should have had Mavis in that, but and then when I found out Pam, Alderwoman Boyd was doing this, this was good because she get to have her own. Most certainly, she has been a trailblazer since she has been in city government. But before that, my proudest accomplishment for her, and I know it may not be hers, is being a public defender. I was a public defender before her. Ronnie White was a public defender before me. People give public defenders a very bad name. They don't know how hard we work and the things that we do. And I had the, I had an Alderman say to me just this week that they found out that public defenders did a lot more than they did. And that they always thought that they just cut deals and that's not what happened. And when you go to the public defender's office, you learn that prepares you to be in politics. When you finish trying those cases there and they throw you in feet first. And when you come out of that, you are ready. I want to say as one of the, the first black female attorney to be elected in the city of St. Louis in an office, I encourage all black attorneys to get, you, you know, I've done that, get involved, get run for offices. We have a lot to bring. People were not used to female attorneys being in office. When I came down here, they told me that to my face, that they were not used to me being able to read. So to watch you come and not only become the first African-American female circuit clerk because you've had a, a past that just kind of moves, then you went to private practice, you're a nurse. You, you are an attorney, then you came back and you became the license collector. You are about your business. I tell people that all the time. Anybody who's talking about running against you, you already know, when you call the first ward or the twentieth ward, you already know what we say, right? It's that we already with you, okay? And it is not about money or jobs and she knows that. It's about our support that she handles her business and she's professional. And that's what we have to bring. Sometimes we've been raised that we have to be better because people don't expect that of us. And that's how you live your life, okay? And people sometimes take that the wrong way because when you're professional and you're direct, they want that to be the angry black woman. That's the black woman getting things done and doing it so that people don't come back and say, oh, she did this the wrong way. And so when people get used to that, because they're used to that with men, when men are like that, they are talked about as that they are leaders and they are dynamic and all of this, but they got another name for women when they are dynamic and leaders and do, handle their business and do things. But for me, I call you one of my sisters in, in the battle for equality and equity. And I call you a person who knows their value and also has values that they present to the community. And I am very honored to be, call you not only my sister, but a friend for a lot of years. And I just want to congratulate you and I apologize that I didn't do it three years ago or two years or whatever it was, but you did know I did come back with the newspaper article to know that because if I make a mistake, I try to correct it, okay? And I'm just honored that the Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh did this and that I could put my name on it and that we can recognize you by yourself as the dynamic, fabulous lady Alderwoman, no, I'm sorry, license collector that you are. And I forgot to talk about your, that you're also a, a member of a sorority. And so you just do so many things. I could sit here for an hour and talk about the things that you do in the leadership, but I appreciate being able to be a co-sponsor of this resolution and congratulations and I thank you for your leadership.
I make a motion that we do this in bank. I'm jumping ahead, but I will make a motion. Alderman from twenty-third home, you have to wait to be recognized. Okay. Thank you, Alderwoman from the first and this will take the Alderman from the twenty-third, Alderman from twenty-third. Yeah, I'll make, I'll make motion, we do this in bank.
Second.
From twenty-third, second by Alderman from the fourth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that, make another copy of the resolution in bank. Congratulations to our friend, Mavis Thompson, all along from twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I just want to join in and celebrating you. Honorable Mavis Thompson, for the relationship we've had, you know, I've watched you for so many years. And so this couldn't come at a better time during Women's History Month, knowing all of the women's history that you have absolutely made. I thank you for being example, being an example to women, especially black women, proud black women in leadership like myself. I absolutely adore the way you come in meetings and command your presence and always make sure that people hear you. You are like the definition of controlling your narrative. And it's so inspiring when I hear you speak some. Thank you for everything you do as Alderwoman Tyus says, so many things you do. We could talk on and on about it. Thank you for all that you do. And I have a little tidbit. I, I bet I can say something that no one else on the board can say. And that is that you delivered my son. Jabari Hubbard, so shout out to Jabari Mavis, the baby that you delivered since he's graduating from high school this year. And we are so proud of him. Yes, continue, continue. So God speed on everything you do. And you know, you, I, I don't have to declare it anymore than I already do that you have my one hundred percent support. So thank you and Godspeed.
Alderman from fourteen.
I would just like to recognize License Collector Thompson. She is always responsive. She is very good at what she does and she, you know, comes with a wealth of knowledge and always responds to any questions that I've had. And I'm sure she's been very responsive with the other Alders and works hard in her office. And I, I appreciate her and it's just a wonderful thing to have a responsible elected official that is responsive to the needs of the constituents. Thank you so much for your service.
Alderwoman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I am honored to claim Mavis Thompson as one of my sorority sisters. And whenever Mavis walks into a room, she commands attention. You know, it, it's, it's just that air about her. And I just want to, I, I, I am just in awe of the many things that she has done. She's good people. You meet her out on the street, she's always the same. And she is all about business. And I just want to make sure I'm glad that the resolution has been in bank and I am glad to be a part of that. And just, I would like to tell her to keep on doing what you're doing, Sora.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Mavis, Madam License Collector, there's so much I can actually, Alderman from the third, Alderman from the third?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, Madam License Collector, also one of the amazing residents in the third ward. Just wanted to say I appreciate you. I appreciate all the things that you bring to the table. For a very long time, you've been making sure that our businesses have recognition there in the city and the return. It's just a lot of great things that you do in the community and people actually see that. So it's good to see our amazing women who live in our communities, live right down the street. Also be individuals we can walk and see in City Hall, Control and Government Services. So I think you've done an amazing job in a position that you've been in. I look forward to all the great things that we'll do and continue to do in the future. Unfortunately, I hate that I'm losing you as a resident, even though you're still a neighbor with this redistricting process of. But right down the street, anything that, you know, I can ever do, of course, to be assistance, you are always communicating with us. Anything that you have going on, you let us know about. Once again, you're, you're an amazing person. I just really appreciate you and honor you in this day for the amazing things that you achieve and the examples that you accept for the people who will come after you. Thank you very much.
Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Of course, to my former constituent and almost neighbor, the most honorable, and I, I mean that sincerely. You have exhibited so much, what I call professionalism for years and years. And when people talk about when you enter a room, the most important thing that I've paid attention to is, and I was taught early on, is you walk with poise and deliberation. And most people don't even understand how important that is. And you'd look, you know, you have your head up, you, you're looking like you're coming to do business. And I love that about you. So as we have been a part of so many things over the years, a former nineteenth ward resident, probably for most of your life, this definitely is a great honor for you to receive. And I'm so glad that my name can be on it. Thank you again for all your service, Mavis.
Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board, Auntie Mavis. I'll tell you, I got a story about Auntie Mavis that, that I always think of every time I see her. I was first elected two thousand seventeen, this was in May, and we did a remodeling of Yate Men Middle School. And I was searching for volunteers to help me repaint and clean up Yate Men Middle School. We, we repainted the gym, classrooms and lockers. And none of us knew how to paint, but one person, the Honorable Mavis Thompson. And I was painting, pretty much messing everything up and she would go behind and repaint what I messed up perfectly. I tell you, I think she's a painter in a past life too. But that day, it wasn't just her that was out. This is on a Saturday morning. Her entire office and staff was also there, sweeping up trash, sweeping up alleys. And our only job was to repaint the school. Her staff was in the alley picking up trash and sweeping up because of her leadership. And that's what I always think about every time I see Auntie Mavis. Not to mention she's also a beast on them doors, who I learned from. So I want to thank you for your leadership, Madam License Collector, and I hope you don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. And I tell you, I know the Alderman from the third is upset that you are not in his ward anymore, but me and the Alderwoman from the nineteenth are excited because you are now in the new eleventh ward. So welcome home, welcome back home. Quit boasting, man, quit boasting.
Yeah, any, any, any further discussion, any further discussion? All right, I have to just add, wait a minute, Alderman from the first. You're muted, Alderwoman.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was trying to close my chat, so I'm sorry. I clicked the wrong thing.
Okay, all right.
She already knows I adore her.
All right. Madam License Collector, I'm just so honored to be here to take part in this resolution for you today. You know how I feel about you. You, you're, you're awesome. You're such a key part of my life, not just my political life, but you know, my life period. You have done so many great things and we share very close friends, you know, Sam Moore. We were both just so close to him. We were both there, you know, the day he passed. And you know, and we've, you always seem to be there with me when both of us need support in tough situations. And I tell you, for those of you who have not had an opportunity really to get to know License Collector Mavis Thompson, when Mavis is with you, she's with you. And she, and no matter how hard, how tough, how difficult things get, she doubles, she doubles down. She works harder to work through whatever the issue is. And I'm not just talking politics, whatever the issue is. They always say leaders are born, not made, and you are a true testament to that. Like what you've done across your lifetime thus far is just amazing. And you have to be one of one when you look at just your background and attorney and also you're delivering babies. I mean, that's just amazing, you know, head of the bar association and on and on and on and on. You just say, you know, in, in your world, there is no glass ceiling because you continue to break them. So, so I, you know, I just appreciate you. I love you as a sister and as a friend. And you know what this resolution does. It smints your name in the permanent records of the city of St. Louis. So that when you go research the records of the city, you'll see and be able to read Mavis Thompson's story and know that you passed this way and we paused this day, they're sure that you were properly recognized. Everybody, please join me in a big round of applause for Mavis Thompson and then we'll
Yes.
Floor is yours, but, but one more, one more thing, Alderman from twenty-seven, any closing remarks before we take it to License Collector or if you want to introduce her?
Yeah, I'm honored to all to introduce the Honorable Mavis Thompson, License Collector. But like I said, I, I knew her before she was the license collector and I followed her and watched her. It's people like her and Alderwoman Tyus and Alderwoman Davis that have showed me how leaders in the women industry, you hear me say women industry, have to do and make things happen. And so Mavis always keeps her eye on the prize, which is our city. And I'm honored to introduce her and let her say a few words, Mavis Thompson.
I just can't really hardly get the words out, but thank you so much, Alderwoman Boyd
and all of the other Alders for this esteemed honor.
You know what? It's a blessing to be recognized by your peers. Just a blessing. They don't have to do it, but they did, and I'm honored. Thank you. I stand on the shoulders, especially during this period of Women's History Month. I stand on the shoulders of so many lady giants, so many, starting in my own household. My grandmother, Mavis, my mother, Lorraine, Frankie Muse Freeman, the Honorable Betty Thompson, Ollie Stewart, Martha West, so many. I'm kind of like an old spirit where I love to sit at the feet of the elders and learn because you can't move forward if you don't know what your history is. And so I stand on the shoulders of so many of these lady giants. One thing that I've been taught since birth, to always, always remember to give God the glory, God the honor, and God the praise. I am blessed. Thank you so very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, well, you are blessing to the city of St. Louis, Mavis. And I know you have a busy day ahead, so we won't hold you any longer. But thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, thank you.
Next one is Alderman from 19th, you have Resolution 218.
Yes, Mr. President. On Resolution 218, I'd just like to ask the clerk to read. It's kind of a long resolution, but I'd like for her to read the beginning, the first two paragraphs, please.
Madam Clerk? The first two paragraphs of Resolution 218.
Resolution 218 honoring Nicole Jenkins. Whereas born and raised in inner-city North St. Louis, Nicole Jenkins proved undeterred and undaunted her desire to overcome all obstacles. Passionate about education, community, and justice, Nicole took advantage of the volunteer DC program to attend public schools in an influential area. And whereas her wit and will carried her well through her studies, but geography kept her grounded in the stark reality that too many poor and impoverished neighborhoods know. It's a cold heart world for the ignored and forgotten.
I thank you so very much. And I wanted that read most especially because that, that, those words really mirror, and it gives us so much to have a good understanding of what many, and I probably should say most African-Americans experience in the beginning of their life. We just finished Black History Month, and now we're saluting our women. But most especially, we need to know and understand how you can achieve, how you can thrive, and you must be determined. So when we talk about Nicole Jenkins today, who is the owner and director of Veterans Advanced Urgent Care, and it's located in 1901 Washington Avenue. She has brought something to this city of St. Louis that is not operating anywhere else in the United States of America. She is providing services to our veterans for, and the list of services is just beyond anything that I could even comprehend to list for you. But one of the most important ones that stand out for me is the PTSD problem that many have. And she can evaluate that in her facility. She is, she is so determined to do and be the best she can to her community. And what I'd like to do at this point right now is to definitely look at, and I think in your Google Drive, you may even have some information that you can see about Nicole other than just the resolution. And I wanted you to understand that this is, this is a, and I say young lady to everybody. To tell you how she wows you, her ribbon cutting day, I drive up to participate, and here we have an Air Force fighter jet sitting at the corner of 19th and Washington Avenue. I was odd. I know a lot of people who can get a lot of things done, but she got that done. She wanted to make sure everyone knew that she was there now, that she was supporting our armed services, and they were elated to be there and stayed for the entire event. It is just so amazing that you can do that and, and know that it means so much to so many people. I do know that as we move forward in this presentation to Nicole, we want to make sure that as, as you have more knowledge, that we will make sure that we share information to our communities about her facility. There's no reason for people to go without services, without some of the tests that they need to have taken, without the therapy sessions that can help people get through their days. All of that is required. And we have it right here in the city of St. Louis on the corner of 19th and Washington Avenue. And so, Mr. President, what I'd like to do now is allow, if you don't mind, allow Nicole Jenkins to present herself and some of the professional medical people that assist her in running her business. Thank you, sir.
All right, and especially since the clerk didn't read all the resolution, I think it'd be good first to hear about all of your background, that, do all sorts of things.
I needed her to say it because, believe me, it's better than reading.
Yeah, I see the direction, your direction you're going normally, but I see the direction you're going.
Hi.
How you doing?
I'm fine. How are you?
Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you for having me. Well, you know, this urgent care, I know a majority of you all came down to visit. It's been very tough getting it off the ground, trying to become credentialed with the VA and TRICARE. And we have finally made waves five months ago. It's very special because this is my team right here. This, this, this is us. And this woman right here, she is the first, this is Dr. Valerie Walker. She was appointed by Conahan. She is the first, but let me, let me let you tell you.
Oh, okay. Well, most of you know me.
Over a little bit.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Okay, oh, can you see me now? Oh, I was the first African-American female appointed by Mel Conahan to lead the State Board of Appeal and Arts. Twenty-two thousand doctors all over the state couldn't get a license unless I signed up on it. And I was so chickled about it, they were saying, how you gonna get this country bumpkin doc out of McIntyre, Georgia to lead us and not somebody from like Barnes or Jewish and all these places? He said, because she was more qualified than all of them. So he was first to recognize that black women, when we come in, we come in with a bang. And when I walked in the first meeting, I'll never forget it, I had dreadlocks in my hair and they all looked at me like, oh my God. But after five years of being on the board, when I left, it wasn't a dry eye in the place. They cried and begged me to stay a little bit longer. I saved so many doctors' licenses. That was a time when they were going after doctors for pain management and all this stuff. So when black women come in, we come in and we make a difference. And that's what I did then, and I'm continuing to do it now. And I want to help Nicole because my dad was actually a veteran. He was one of the first African-American lieutenant colonels in the military. So to see the veterans on the street, do you know most veterans are homeless? And when you see them on the street, those are actually veterans. It just breaks my heart. So when Nicole asked me to come in and help, I told her surely I would be happy to do anything we can do to get them to health care. They went and they fought for this country and they came back and were called all kinds of things, especially the Vietnam vets. They were called baby murderers, just being mean to them. And my dad died when I was 11. He's going on to be with the Lord. But the ones that are left, and we can help them, let's do that.
Thank you.
We also have Dr. Connie Hayes. Her, she's headed to her brother's passing. She is former U.S. Army military. She is a Team Olympic USA chiropractor, sports medicine. She trains Allison Felix. She trains Ezekiel Elliott. She's going to Serbia next week for the USATF. And I don't know what she does, but her and Dr. Walker, they're healers. They are healers. And we're trying to get the veterans off of so many medication, prescribed medication drugs. We have a good international base as well. We have our two nurse practitioners, Deborah Adewale, she is from Nigeria. And we have Tabitha Robinson. She has been known to do nursing, patient education. We control diabetes. We control high cholesterol. We control PTSD. And the beautiful thing about this center is we pray. We are a family. We're all women. We have one male that's former Navy. He's our brother. He's our baby. We treat him like our baby. And Greg, he's sick right now, so we're taking care of him. And we get so many veterans coming from the community that they just come in here. They want to come in here and sit and talk to us, and they love the place. And it makes us feel good, you know? We have some phenomenal, our lead medical assistant, Amisha Harper. She has so many years of training at People's Clinic and just all around St. Louis city and county. We have Taryn Nichols. She leads the front desk and she's very good and she knows what she's doing. So we're bringing something as women. We're on a move. And you know, everyone laughed at me when I wanted to do this. I went to 33 investors. Everyone laughed at me. They told me that I could not do it. So Marlene and the president and the board of Alderman and all of the Alderman and women in St. Louis city, thank you for supporting this. Jeffrey Boyd, he came down, he called and said, hey, you got COVID test? You got this? You got that? I begged Dr. Walker. I begged her. She took a pay cut to come with me. These doctors came from Mercy and SSM and making big money. And these nurse practitioners, and we want to be here in the city. Our goal is to build our own facility so we can expand the services. And we just added on dental with Dr. Macal Bayle. He sent him out of his office. That's right. So hopefully, we can get our own place and we can have dental in there. And cardiology.
Heart disease, the number one killer of black people.
We are here. We're here to serve. And I don't know how I did it because I know Shamene Clark Hubbard. And we were just two young girls catching a bus to school. Two young girls catching a bus to school. Shamene had a vision and everybody laughed at her when we were in high school. And Shamene turned out to be the top hairstylist to take care of your hair and to grow your hair. Couldn't get a business loan, couldn't get anything. She started from the bottom, and that's the same with me. So it is very special to be two young girls from St. Louis city and look at us now. This is for the young girls.
All right, all right, all right. Thank you.
And we partner with St. Louis College of Health Careers now. We get our second student.
Oh, excellent.
Hey, you want to hear the big boom? This is the big boom. We, I'm gonna hit you with it. I belong to Elks Lodge, Ladue Number Nine. They're trying to make it more diverse. So I came in with my little sprinkle. For the first time ever in history of the Elks Lodge, Ladue Number Nine won the grant and kids at Live for Life will learn how to become pilots.
That's incredible.
That's awesome. Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I don't know how I'm gonna come behind this. Let me calm myself down. I'm going to have to beg Alderman Caro to please let me take this from you this time. Make a motion for this resolution for my sister to go in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second by Alderman from the 4th, and we'll sit Alderman from the 23rd, the resolution in bank in discussion. All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Alderman Caro. Oh, listen, she said it out loud. That was gonna be my whole spiel about it. And since you don't have to know how you do it, you don't have to know how you get it. We know how you get it. We know how you do it and how you continue to do it. So you know, I will say, you know, the big boom always happens with you, like Alderman Davis said. Just like she had that jet down there, Alderman Davis, we had plans to land it at Wauwaw prior to COVID. Our babies could see that again, it's about these kids seeing what they can be. And like she said, coming from North St. Louis, running around, catching buses, trying to figure it out, having dreams, getting laughs there, like she said, and now look at us, sis. I am so proud of you. Know how proud of you I am. And you know that you have my support 100% and everything. I can't wait till you build that building from the ground up, sis. We all start talking about it now. And your additional clinic is so good. God is so good, sis. Congratulations.
You don't have a dream to land it at Wauwaw. It is gonna be landed at Wauwaw.
Alderman from the 23rd.
I was actually going to defer to the Alderman from the 22nd to do the motion to do it in bank. He is a veteran and I thought that would be kind of cool. But I am going to say, we're all putting our name on this, plus everything that's on this. Is this resolution going to be on two pages or do you have to use a microscope? The printing gets smaller and smaller and smaller. People with a lot of accomplishments, you almost have to have a magnifying glass to read the resolution. But congratulations. And also want to thank again my friend, you know, the Alderman of the 22nd, who is a veteran and apparently has already been down to see you.
From the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Wow, Nicole, I'm feeling kind of emotional right now. I remember when you first talked to me about doing this, and it wasn't at the spot where you are now.
No.
So I know you went through some struggles. I've watched you go through some struggles. And I was excited, you know, to be at the ribbon cutting and like Alderman Davis said, a plane? I was like, wow, this lady got some clout. Always enthusiastic.
It was a jet, not a plane.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's a jet. Okay. Thank you, Alderman from the 4th. But anyway, just always energetic, you know, always got a smile. Just a joy to be around. And as somebody who's actually a disabled vet, I'm not just a vet. I'm a disabled vet as well. I don't share that a lot with everybody. But I just really appreciate you and I really applaud you for wanting to reach out to people like me to make sure they were mentally well, physically well. I love that word healing, you know? Healing sounds so much better than just making somebody well. You are healing people, and that's important because today, you know, a lot of doctors just want to hook us up on prescriptions, you know? You know, just put a Band-Aid on it, but it's time to be healed. So again, I appreciate you so much, sister. But I think you're also from the west side, too. I heard Alderman from the 26th said in north side, but I think I remember you being from the west side as well.
I remember the gang, son.
So again, thank you so much, my sister. I really appreciate you and just so happy to be a part of this resolution. So again, thank you so much, my sister. I really appreciate you and just so happy to be on part of this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the women from the twenty-seventh.
Okay, Ms. Nicole. All these people on this call, on this Zoom don't know, we were the first ones to talk. And somebody messed it up for us. So I just want you to know, you want to be, we got the space, baby. We got it for you. Because all the other people always trying to grab stuff. I'm grabbing this. And she did come to me a long time ago. And so she does have the energy. I was so honored. And I was mind boggled. I told Alderwoman Davis, when we saw that jet, I was like, oh my God. This is fabulous. So I think you have a fantastic vision. I think God has bigger plans for you to take you to higher levels to service our community. And so it just shows what black women can do in our communities if people just support and lift them up. Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, of the board. Let me just set this up. I'm trying to charge my, uh, my alder tablet while I do this. Um, I just want to say to Ms. Jenkins and her team, if not her family, uh, y'all were speaking to my soul. So the young woman who said country bumpkin, that she was compared to a country bumpkin, I have been compared to a country bumpkin. And I've worked very hard. I come from South Curry, from a lumberjack family. I've worked very hard to, to be more than what my family's legacy had entailed for me. Had a woman who works with Team USA. Oh my gosh, Ms. Jenkins, I am a huge.
It's in the window.
I thought maybe one day I could go, uh, a little further beyond than what my body had decided to take me in sports. So I just want to say thank you so much for our most delightful introduction to both yourself and your team today. And thank you especially for your incre- and incredibly vital and life-saving work, truly. I'm so excited that we made this on bank. That was going to be my request as well, Mr. President. But I'm happy to say that about fourteen other alders beat me to it at first. Um, and Ms. Jenkins, please, please, please never doubt, and Ms. Jenkins' team as well. Please never doubt that your work is, oh, I'm sorry, what's the photo? What? Okay. So sorry. This is so indulgent for me. I'm so excited. Dear colleagues, Ms. Jenkins, Mr. President, so thank you so much for your continuing contribution to our city, um, to our region. And I, I think it's fair to say to our country, after all, it's Team USA. So with that, Mr. President, I joyfully yield back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, any further discussion? Well, Nicole, I just want to thank you for a job well done. You've just been just tremendous, uh, when we came down there for your opening. I, all of the detail and all of the things that you talked about that you do within those rooms and how you care for the people, for the veterans is just amazing. And to have that here in the city of St. Louis, for you to be born and raised here in the city of St. Louis and then choose to stay here and then choose to open up your business and to give back in the way you've given back. And to just have such a team that is a family. It, it's just, it's just amazing. Um, and it, I'm just so proud to be part of helping to write your story into our permanent records. And this has special significance, uh, given that it's Women's Month. And, uh, you're being honored here today. Uh, will have its place in the history of the city of St. Louis. Uh, we are, you know, through this covert relief funding, you should reach out to all of the aldermen that just spoke to you because, because there's an opportunity to get some of those things done that you're talking about getting done, uh, in the needed communities around our city. So I just want to thank you, congratulate you on a job well done. Keep doing what you're doing. Um, you are changing the lives of people each and every day. And that's to you and all of your team members. Welcome to the archives of the city of St. Louis and your story is not over. Already at such a young age. Everybody join me in a round of applause.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
We love the city of St. Louis. We don't want to be anywhere else.
All the ones from the, would you like to say anything and clo- anything else in closing to, uh, to Ms. Jenkins and our team?
I just want to say to you and your team, uh, that we are blessed. I appreciate you. I'm so honored that so many of my colleagues are very supportive. And as we move forward in the coming years with the revitalization, uh, of this city, that we can assist you in being a part of, uh, something new and exciting on a larger scale. Thank you, Nicole.
Thanks, Marlene. Thank you.
From the twenty-second.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to add my name to a few resolutions if this is, unless we're doing another presentation.
Hold for a second. Okay. Uh, Nicole, thank you to you and your team. You're free, you're free to leave now. I know you have, you have a busy day. We don't want to hold you up. Thank you for giving us this much time.
All righty.
All right. Uh, uh, all the ones from the, uh, first, the fourth, fourth, there's another resolution first. Let me get to that. All the ones from the seventeenth. Uh, you had a courtesy resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Yes, uh, Resolution two nineteen.
All right. Hold on one second. Let me get to the all the ones from the first, just in case there's something related. All the ones from the first, is it something overall related or something related to, um?
No, I had two resolutions that I want to be read. That's all. So I'll just wait until they're finished. Okay?
Okay. All right. All the ones from the fourteenth. Um, did you have your hand up for?
Yes, I would just like to, um, read or not read the whole resolution, but, um, mention the two resolutions that recognize the, uh, Senator Pat Casey that is coming for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday. Um, and then I would like to recognize Chief Jenkerson as the parade marshal for the St. Patrick's Day Parade that takes place Saturday. And that, just, and if anybody wants to be, uh, included in these resolutions, please just put it in the chat box. Okay?
All right. Thank you. All the ones from the seventeenth.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I am so honored to be able to present, uh, with, uh, other alder who are going to be co-sponsoring this Resolution two nineteen to honor Dr. Helen Nash. Uh, Dr. Helen Nash, uh, is a pioneer for women. And, uh, so this is a special time to present this resolution to her and her family who are guests here today. She is a doctor who was the first woman, black woman, to graduate from the Wash U Medical School in nineteen forty-five. She began her internship at the Homer G. Phillips Hospital. She was instrumental in transforming the prenatal, neonatal care for premature babies here in St. Louis. She was the first black woman to sta- to be on the staff of the St. Louis Children's Hospital. And I would love to have this resolution read by the assistant clerk, please.
Uh, ma'am clerk, please read Resolution two nineteen.
Resolution two nineteen honoring Dr. Helen Nash. Whereas the Nash family has selflessly served the families of St. Louis, where a Nash pediatrician has been treating children and reassuring patients since nineteen, since the nineteen forties. And whereas Dr. Nash was a pioneer for women, for black Americans, and a pioneer in medicine. Graduating medical school in nineteen forty-five as one of only four women in her graduating class, she began an intern at Homer G. Phillips Hospital, the only hospital in St. Louis open to black doctors. She helped transform their care for premature babies, reducing infant mortality with simple effective changes in practice and organizations within the neonatal unit. And whereas in nineteen forty-nine, she became the first woman to join the staff at St. Louis Children's Hospital, rising become, to become president of staff in nineteen seventy-seven, a position she held into nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas also in nineteen forty-nine, she became the first black woman to join the faculty of Washington University School of Medicine, where she served as a professional of clinical pediatrics. In nineteen seventy, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-three, she served as the school's dean of minority affairs until returning into nineteen ninety-six. And whereas also in nineteen forty-nine, Helen Nash opened her own private practice to serve children. And whereas all the, all the while, Dr. Helen Nash, Nash was a Renaissance woman, having served on the Missouri Botanical Garden Board for more than two decades, on the Board of St. Louis Symphony, where she, where she endowed a guest artist chair. And on the Missouri Historical Society Book Board of Trust, where she donated a collection of historic work, works related to black culture, including the first editions of Uncle Tom's Cabin, as well as works by Langston Hughes, rare maps documenting the slave trade and manuscripts related to emancipation in Civil War era. And whereas her brother, Dr. Homer Nash Jr., would follow in nineteen fifty-two for his own residency at Homer G. Phillips. Whereas Homer Nash was awarded Bronze Star and a Purple Heart in the Second Great World War. Whereas he too opened his own practice, renting space above a drugstore in nineteen fifty-five. And whereas both doctors Nash, both doctors Nash were advocate not only for children in their clinics or for the children of greater St. Louis, urging physicians to report mistreatment by parents or caretaker, convincing seated leaders to address live poisoning and red bikes, all two common problems among the undeserved children in St. Louis, and being early adopters of using nurse practitioners to help extend the care available to the community. And whereas Homer's daughter, Allison Nash, continued the legacy as a pediatrician today, a true native daughter of St. Louis, having graduated from our public schools in nineteen seventy-three. And whereas following her father's footsteps, she also served notably in US military. At the medical school, she spent eleven and eleven year career, career with the Navy rising, with the Navy, rising to the rank of Lieutenant Commander Allison Nash, returned home to join her father at his North City Pediatric Clinic, where she too has lived professionally and in the community. And whereas the Nash family has been decorated in the, uh, acknowledgement of this contribution to St. Louis and medicine. Both Helen and Homer Nash were awarded lifetime achievement awards in healthcare by the St. Louis American. Allison Nash received the Stella Performer and Healthcare Award from the St. Louis Americans and was named Community Advocate of the Year by St. Louis Children's Hospital. Helen Nash was honored with the lifetime honorary membership in St. Louis Medical Society and the Women's, and the Medical Women's Society and the NAACP Helen Nash, its Women's Medal of Honor, while both, while both the University of Missouri and Wesley University awarded her honorary doctorates. And whereas in the honor of Nellie Hatch's pioneer work, this Washington University School of Medicine has awarded the Dr. Helen Nash Academic Achievement Award annually to a student since nineteen ninety-six. And in two thousand and fourteen, the St. Louis Children's Hospital began offering an internship to young women of color in Dr. Nash's honor. And where, and whereas the Nash family has become to define pediatrics for generations of St. Louis parents and children and such, for all reasons mentioned herein and for many other reasons, this body, this body recently passed a bill to make Nash Way a street in the city of St. Louis. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize the many accomplishment and achievement of the Nash family. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to pre- prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to the family at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this eleven day on March twenty twenty-two by the Honorable Tina Peal, Alderwoman Seventeenth Ward, the Honorable Shemene Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman of the Twenty-Sixth Ward.
All right. Congratulations. Back to the, we're going to go back to the Alderwoman of the seventeenth and then we're going to open it up.
Well, uh, thank you so much. Uh, this is, uh, a, a great pleasure of mine to be, I actually was introduced to Dr. Helen Nash, uh, through, uh, the, uh, Board of Alder, uh, Bill one twenty-six, in which we ni- named, uh, the Street Nash Way. And I found out how impressive, uh, Helen Nash has been to St. Louis in terms of changing how we practice and her accomplishments and leading the way for other people to be the first in so many ways. And so I would like to open it up to, uh, the aldermen and alderwomen here who actually know a lot more and have been in the presence of Dr. Helen Nash. So.
Thank you. All, all the, all the men from the twenty-third.
Yes, this time I, I'm first. So I do want to, I'd like to make this in bank. And congratulate you for.
By Alderman from twenty-third, second by Alderman from the ninth, that we make, uh, this resolution in bank. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Ma'am clerk, please create another copy of this resolution in bank. All the ones from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to take up the rest of the meeting, talking about my love for not only Dr. Helen Nash, but the entire Nash family. Good morning to the twins. Good morning to Mrs. Fowler. I see you right here. Um, this work is, is full circle for me for so many reasons, but not, um, just because I just told a little story when I, um, opened up my first salon. Dr. Nash was essentially my first, uh, commercial. And my tagline in that commercial for my first salon was, she used to take care of me and now I take care of her hair. And so it was such a big deal for me to be able to honor somebody that, first of all, I was so scared to see and the few, the times when I had to go to the doctor, I was scared to death of Dr. Nash. But then to turn around and look forward to seeing her every week and the stories we shared and the knowledge and wisdom she shared was just amazing. So, so thank you, Alderwomen, for bringing this forward. Um, I look forward to the many more celebrations that we're going to have for Dr. Nash, honoring the work and the legacy that she has left us here with and, and the dreams that she has left us here with to fulfill. So, um, thank you again and good morning again to the family. Please give my love to Dr. Homer, Homer Nash and the rest of the family.
All the ones from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to give my, uh, kudos to the entire Nash, uh, family for the generations of care that they have given. You know, in my era, it was not possible in the black community that your children were not going to the Nash. I remember when I was younger, the office that they had up over the pharmacy, we called them drugstores back then. Okay. But I shall say pharmacy. But there's so, so much. And to have, um, this opportunity to have someone who gave so much. You know, it could have been a big donor or anybody else affiliated with the hospital, having that street named over there. But this is someone who truly, uh, made a difference in the care that was provided for folk and was extremely dedicated to making sure that it was superior. So again, thank you to the entire family. And I know that your, uh, future, uh, generations are also going to be in that place of serving. So, um, kudos to you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All the ones from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is such a great, um, wonderful time right now. Um, I and my family actually all pretty much attended, uh, with Dr. Nash, some form of Dr. Nash. My twin aunts went to Dr. Helen. Me and my siblings were patients of Dr. Homer, as well as, um, when Dr. Allison came in. My children go to Dr. Allison. You couldn't ask for a better group of people. Um, their focus on patient care is amazing. Not only do they not rush you through your appointments, but they sit and take time to listen. I literally just left Dr. Allison, um, right before our meeting started this morning because Cree has two ear infections. And just to be able to get in to get seen, you know, Dr. Homer, when I was younger, and I just dealt with ass for my whole life, he called the insurance company, and he told them that he wanted me to have a nebulizer machine. They said no. Well, he demanded that I have a nebulizer machine. Again, no. Dr. Homer said, "Okay, well, every time she cough, I'm putting her into the hospital." I had that nebulizer machine in my house at one o'clock that afternoon. They always fight for their patients' care, and we are so, so very lucky to have African-American doctors such as the Nash family to serve our community, and I just wanna say thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Certainly, my family have been part of the Nash family experience in healthcare. Uh, my son was treated by Miss Helen Nash, and, um, always exceptional service. So I just wanna say congratulations to the Nash family. Uh, what a great legacy that's been left behind. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh?
I, you know what, I think everybody can look at what Homer G. Phillips has produced in our community in regards to the African-American doctors that we have. The Nash family is part of that history. And so we had so many doctors, African-American doctors, that were so committed to our community because they too knew that we didn't have the services we were supposed to have. And so, uh, Alderwoman Tyus and Davis, I'm trying to look at the ages on here, might remember Reed, Evans. I remember the house calls. I remember when those black doctors would come to our homes and take care of our families. So I applaud the Nashes because they're continuously keeping that legacy going and letting people know what our doctors put forth for our communities and how hard they fought for us. So thank you all so, so much. And I appreciate you because you still serving generations of our children to help them be better health-wise as patients. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I can remember, and, um, an incident where, when my daughter was born, she was in a hosp- she stayed, she was born premature, premature, and by them running a lot of IVs, they had her hair shaved off, and people were calling her a little boy. "Oh, that, is that a little boy?" No, it's a girl. And, um, what I wanted to do was get her ears pierced so that they would know that she was a little girl. And no one would do it except Dr. Nash. So I went to her office and she pierced my daughter's ears. So that way I didn't have to explain that she was a girl, and you just don't know how that affected me. So, Dr. Nash came through, uh, because no one else would pierce her ears because she was so young. But I just got tired of them telling me, "Oh, is that a little boy?" No, it's a girl. Okay, but that was, uh, one of my encounters with Dr. Nash, and I just raised my hand, and I'm glad that I'm part of that, of this resolution. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Lost in that, oh, there you are. I lost lost the Nash family for a second on my screen. To bring you up, uh, I just wanna congratulate your whole family on, you know, the totality of your many contributions on behalf of the city. When you can come into a room of like this one where you have, you know, twenty-eight aldermen, twenty-nine aldermen, including myself, and of that twenty-nine, bunch of them have come in contact with your family, and your family has done things to change their lives and their children's lives. That's just amazing. I mean, that's, that's just amazing. That, that, that shows that you have made such a, you know, your family has made such a massive contribution to the city of St. Louis that goes back so many years that it is unprecedented. So I cannot thank you enough. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. And what it does is cements in time some of that entities or organizations or individuals many contributions up until that point. And I'm honored today, along with many other aldermen, to congratulate you, your family, and for all that you all have done on behalf of residents of the city of St. Louis. As African-Americans, we struggle so much in healthcare. Uh, but to have a family rise to the top of that industry and to give back to our, our community is something that we just don't see. So congratulations to your family on all that you've done. Let's give them a big round of applause. For one hundred, two hundred years from now, you'll be able to research the records of the city of St. Louis. You will be able to read about the Nash family and know that you passed this way, and you made such a significant contribution. On this day, we made history again by making sure that your records were committed to the final records in the city of St. Louis. So welcome, welcome to the archives of the city of St. Louis. And now I'm gonna turn it back over to Alderman. Who's gonna speak on your side?
Um, I am gonna have, uh, Lauren Nash Ming, who was Helen's niece. And, uh, Dr. Sessions Cole is gonna speak, who is a mentor, mentee of Dr. Helen Nash. And also, uh, Ms. June Fowler, uh, the former Senior Vice President Communications and Marketing at BJC.
Oh, yeah, we know June, too. So, so please proceed in that order.
Good morning, President Reed and aldermen and women of the city of St. Louis. We are so excited to be here and honored by this resolution. I am here, as Shamine said, we are the twins, we are daughters of Dr. Homer Nash. I am Lauren Nash Ming, and this is Sherry Hurd. And I don't know if Dr. Cole was able to join the call.
He is here.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, we are here really representing our father, Dr. Nash, our aunt, Dr. Helen Nash, and our sister, Dr. Allison Nash, to thank you for this honor. Allison would love to have been here today, but as you heard earlier, she's actually seeing patients right now. She's doing what you're honoring her for. So, um, I just, we just wanted to say a few words on behalf of our family. The Nash doctors are loved by our family, of course, and the city of St. Louis because of who they are, how much they care, which you all have testified to, and all the things they've done to improve the lives of patients in the community of the city of St. Louis. And so we thank you for memorializing their legacy in this way. It's awesome to think that two hundred years from now, uh, they'll, we'll still know about us. And thank you for, uh, the naming of the street Nash Way. That's another memorialization of their legacy. But, um, as some have said before, their legacy lives on also in the lives of the patients and the families that they've touched in a very human way. I meet someone almost daily that was a patient of one of the doctors Nash, and, um, they, either Allison, Homer, or Helen. And there's another way their legacy lives on because, uh, I know many physicians and pediatricians of my generation who followed their path to medicine because of the influence of either Dr. Helen Nash or Dr. Homer Nash. So they continue to change lives. And then finally, their legacy continues to live on in all the improvements they've made in the health of our community through their advocacy for patients and changes that they fought for in the way health is administered. So once again, on behalf of my father, Dr. Homer Nash, my sister, Dr. Allison Nash, and of course, the woman of the hour, my aunt, Dr. Helen Nash, and really all of the Nash family. We thank you so much for this honor, and, um, although Helen is no longer with us, we believe she's smiling down at us today. We certainly are. We all have big grins. Again, we thank you so much.
You had, um, you had a couple other speakers?
Yes, Dr. Sessions Cole, who is a mentee of Dr. Helen Nash.
Now, President Reed and Board of Alderwomen and Aldermen, I'm honored and humbled to be a part of the recognition of, uh, one of the giants of pediatric and medical care, both in St. Louis and nationally, Dr. Helen Nash. I was very fortunate to meet Dr. Nash in nineteen eighty-six, when I came to Washington University to become the chief of the Division of Newborn Medicine at Wash U and at Children's Hospital. And Dr. Nash very kindly took me under her wing, and she showed me things about how the community works, about what was best for the children of the community, about the, uh, kinds of problems that she and the community's children had encountered. And she basically showed me a way, showed me the ways to help support all of our community's children, especially African-American children. So Dr. Nash's legacy and life have been, have had an enormous impact on me personally, and have had an enormous impact on Washington University and on St. Louis Children's Hospital. But most importantly, Dr. Nash, Dr. Nash's legacy continues with the trainees that she influenced, and all of us are enthusiastic about having a street close to Children's Hospital, which will ensure that her name is associated with the best transformational care for the children of St. Louis. So thank you very much, Alderwoman Peel, and thank you very much, President Reed and the Board of Aldermen. I'm very honored, very honored to be a part of this.
Thank you for those great words.
Good morning. Good morning. I am June Fowler. I am here on behalf of BJC Healthcare and Washington University. We are so appreciative, uh, to partner with Alderwoman Tina Peel in, uh, this resolution and the renaming of a street in the heart of our campus to honor the Nash family. Dr. Helen Nash, uh, you know, you have heard so much about. She blazed trails as the first in so many areas, but the great thing about her is she didn't want to sit on her laurels being the first. She wanted to make sure she wasn't the only. So ensuring that others followed in her footsteps, her little brother Homer, who, again, we all love, and her niece Allison. For us at the academic campus, there are a number, as you heard in the resolution, uh, resolution ways that, uh, the Nash family has been honored. And we on the academic campus know about those ways. But the renaming of this street and the resolution now assures that everyone will know. Uh, for those who don't know where the street is, it is off Taylor, right at the intersection where the, uh, bi-state transit hub is. So when people are looking to find out, "How do I get to the transfer center for bi-state buses?" Or, "How do I get to that Central West End metro link?", they are going to see the new Nash Way. So we are just, uh, so pleased and happy to partner with each of you. We look forward to having a ceremony in the spring where we will unveil the street, and we will make sure, I know with Alderwoman Peel, that everyone, uh, is invited to that celebration. So again, thank you all so very much.
Recognize this family and its honoree in such a great way. And any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the seventeenth, do you have any final words?
Yes, I just would like to, um, thank the Nash family and, uh, your perseverance in terms of building, you know, the pediatrics and medicine here in St. Louis, and how you're forwarding that on from person to person, the legacy lives on. And I find it just fitting that Alderwoman Middlebrook just saw Allison Nash, Dr. Allison Nash, this morning. Uh, unfortunately, she had to go into the office, but, um, that she did that, um, during this meeting. So how instrumental your family is and how they have touched so many lives. And so thank you to the Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen for, uh, putting this in bank. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much, Nash family, and please pass the information to the entire family. And if you need additional copies of this resolution, we can get you as many copies as you need for, for the family members. But, uh, thank you so much. Your family has transformed this city of St. Louis in a good way and in a better way. We are better because of you. So thank you so much for what you've done to impact families all across the city of St. Louis. Everybody, join me in one more big round of applause. It's important that we celebrate our treasures. Thank you so much, Nash family. I know you probably have things going, so, so you're free at this time to leave if you, if you would like, or you can stick around for the whole board. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
President?
Alderman from the, Alderwoman from the from the, uh, no, but Alderman from the first had her hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
From the first?
Before you pass the consent, uh, resolution calendar, I have two resolutions that I want to be read and heard. Both of them relate to citizens in the first ward that turn a hundred. I like to think it is because of that, uh, it's because of the wonderful, wonderful political representation, representation they've had over the thirty years. You know, I come every few months with people who have turned a hundred, okay? And so I know we have a long agenda, but I think when you turn a hundred, that we should, uh, uh, honor you, and I would like to have Resolution two oh three honoring, uh, um, Ms. Eugenia Young Red. She turned a hundred on the second of March, and unfortunately, I wasn't here last week. But I do want it, uh, I want her resolution read, and I'd like us to take a moment to just wish her happy birthday, please.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, please read Resolution two oh three.
Resolution two zero three honoring Eugenia Ransom Young on the occasion of a hundredth birthday. Whereas Ms. Eugenia Ransom was born on March second nineteen ninety-two, I'm sorry, nineteen twenty-two in Arkansas. And whereas Eugenia was born to the union of Mr. Alicia Ransom and Ms. Betty Ransom, the second youngest of four siblings, two brothers and one sister. Whereas Eugenia Ransom weded Thomas Allen Young to their union. Thomas Eugene Young was born. And whereas Ms. Young received her bachelor's science degree from Arkansas University and a master's degree plus thirty-three hours and above from Webster University. And whereas Ms. Young's career in elementary school And whereas Ms. Young's career in elementary school, elementary education spans over four decades in the West Helena, Arkansas School District, the St. Louis Public Schools and Ferguson-Floreson School District, Ms. Young enjoyed reading, enjoyed teaching, enjoyed her teaching career and retired in 1985. And whereas Ms. Young's happiness is centered around her family, her church, her friends, and Jesus Christ, her Lord and Savior. And whereas Ms. Young's parents, siblings, and spouse are deceased, leaving, leaving her beloved son, Thomas Allen Young, to cherish and celebrate her. Whereas Ms. Young's personal philosophy is still forthwith faith in God, overcome obstacles, obstacles in life, and success is rewarded. And whereas on March 2nd, 2022, Eugenia Ransom Young turned a hundred years old and the hospice occasion was celebrated by family and friends, her church family and others. Now let it be, now therefore let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to honor and recognize and congratulate Ms. Eugenia Ransom Young on the occasion of her hundredth birthday. We direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to the honoree at the time and place deemed by the sponsor. Introduce this fourth, I'm sorry, eleventh day of March, 2022, by the Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderwoman of the First Ward.
All right, Alderwoman from the first, let's give.
I'm.
One hundred.
I don't know if the Alderman from the twenty-second was waiting for something else that he wanted to speak to this resolution. Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, I just really want to say that I am so fortunate and I live in a community and where black people live to be a hundred years old. I cannot stress this enough, coming from the generation that they come from, that so many people turn a hundred years old, so many African American people. They've had hard lives, and I also want to stress, a lot of them moved from what was the fourth ward at one time to, when they moved, it was the twentieth ward. They moved in, a lot of them, most of them live in the Kingsway East or Kingsway West neighborhood. I know them personally. That's what is so amazing to me. I've represented the people for such a long time, so I know them personally. I know Ms. Young. She lives right across the street from Lexington School on Norwell with her son. And it is amazing that you, she's up and about still and participates and for many, many years will be on that phone with complaints or compliments or whatever she needed me to do. And I've been very fortunate to represent her for nearly thirty years. And I just want to ask this board if we would please just wish her a very happy one-hundredth birthday and, and, and I hope that she continues to live on and enjoy a productive life.
All right, let's give another big round of applause and happy birthday to Mrs. Thursday.
Happy birthday.
Birthday.
Happy birthday, Ms. Young.
Okay. The second um, resolution I have is Resolution.
Two oh four.
Two oh four. And this unfortunately is about a death, but it's not a sad death. This is about Reverend Jones. Reverend Jones died at a hundred and four, just recently died. He was a member of a, of a Reverend Nance's church and was associate pastor there. Up until his death, he was still going to the church. In fact, I'm going to have this resolution framed and it's going to be hung in the church. I did talk to Reverend Nance Jr. about this. So at a hundred and four, I want to celebrate his life and say that he was active right up until the end. He knew what was going on. He went to sleep and he died in his sleep. We all know that when we're born, we're going to die. And when you live to a hundred and four, and what I was raised about, the Bible gives you to seventy. So when you get past seventy and you then are thirty-four years past seventy, you are almost on your second lifespan. And I knew Reverend Jones, every time I ran, we walked up the street, he would say, do you have Miss Tyus's sign? Why don't you, why isn't that sign in my yard? So he meant that. He was a big supporter of mine and I was a fan of his. The uh, our license collector talked about sitting at people's foot and learning. You cannot lead if you do not know how to follow. I want to stress that. You cannot lead if you do not know how to follow. So I have been so fortunate to have so many people like Ms. Young, Reverend Jones, Martha West, Ollie Stewart, in my life that I have sat at the foot of and listened to them tell the stories that sometimes people don't want to hear about their life, why it was important, and trying to vote, which is why I'm offended when people want to take black votes away from people, because when I hear these people talk about how hard it was to vote, how they had uh, uh, poll taxes and did everything they could, but yet they not only survived, they thrived. And so I would like, like the board, the Madam Clerk to also read Resolution 2004 and to take a moment that we have a moment of silence for Reverend Eddie Celeste Jones, please.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution 204?
Resolution 204 on honoring and in memory of Reverend, Reverend Eddie Celeste Jones. Whereas Eddie Celeste Jones was born October 7th, 1917 in Yazoo City, Yazoo County, Mississippi, to the union of Reverend William Harry Johnson, Arlie Tripleton, Tripleton Jones. There were five children born into the Jones family. And whereas Eddie Jones' spiritual journey began on the confession of his faith in Jesus Christ, he was baptized by the Reverend White of Lake City Missionary Baptist Church in Yazoo City, Mississippi. And later his family moved to Mount Burnham, Mrs., moved to Mount Burnham Missionary Baptist Church under the pastor of Reverend Twain in Yazoo City. And whereas Eddie was educated in Yazoo City and graduated from Yazoo, Yazoo City High School, attending and graduating from Jackson College in Jackson, Mississippi. And whereas while attending Jackson College, the sparks of love connected Eddie and Clarissa Jefferson, and Eddie married the love of his life in 1942, and the love, love lasted for over sixty years. The two of them became one in ministry and worked tirelessly together, traveling and declaring the message of Jesus Christ to the unsaved. And whereas in 1946, God called Eddie to preach the good news of the gospel, and he and his wife moved to St. Louis and joined and served with Mount Esther Missionary Baptist Church under the pastor of Reverend Richmond. And as their journey of faith continued, they united with Great, Greater Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church under the pastor of late Reverend Earl E. Nance Sr., and has remained faithful under the pastor of Reverend Earl E. Nance Jr. And whereas, to further prepare himself for ministry, Eddie enrolled and graduated from St. Louis Christian College. Eddie loved his church family and served faithfully as assistant to pastor and as a Sunday school teacher for adult class number two for over fifty years. And whereas Eddie entered, entered the United States Army doing basic training at Camp Craft in South Carolina, and he also served in New York City and Hawaii as a technical supply sergeant. And whereas Reverend Eddie Jones answered the call of the Heavenly Father, the God who sets time for everything under the Son, the lover of his soul, and entered into the presence of the Lord on Sunday, February the sixth, 2022, at the age of a hundred and four. Reverend Jones still lived in his home on the forty-nine-hundred block of Co-Brilliant and died in his beloved Kingsway East neighborhood. And whereas Reverend Jones, homegoing is mourned and cherished by his immediate family, four nephews and seven nieces and a host of great, 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 great nephews and nieces and cousins, friends, and his church family of Greater Mount Carmel Baptist Church and all who knew him. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and honor Reverend Eddie Celeste Jones for the joy he brought to all who knew him. We direct the clerk of the Board of Aldermen to prepare, I'm sorry, to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this fourth day of Mar-, I'm sorry, eleventh day of March, 2022, by the Honorable Sharon Tyus, First Alderwoman of the First Ward.
Right. At the request of the Alderwoman from the first, please join, let's join her in a moment of silence for Reverend Eddie Celeste Jones for a life well spent. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board.
All right, anything further, Alderwoman from the first?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to add my name to a few resolutions, uh, Resolutions 207, 209, 211, and 215. Thank you.
207, 209, 211, and 215. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the twenty-third?
Yeah, I think especially since this is going to be hanging in the church, I would like to make sure we're all represented and do that in bank.
Uh, Resolution 204.
204 in bank, because we know cream rises to the top. So we know where he's at. We should have all of our names on there.
Been moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-third, seconded by Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, uh, I think that was the twenty-sixth and maybe the nineteenth, that we make Resolution 204 in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Create another copy of Resolution 204 in bank. Alderwoman from the twenty-seven.
I just, I just wanted to thank Alderwoman Tyus for always recognizing her seniors, because I think a lot of us that's been doing this a while understand that's the, the heart of our wars. That's the ones that keep our wars going, and they really keep us on point. And I tell my seniors all the time that they educate me every day to learn something different in how things should be. This person that Alderwoman Tyus is recognizing is showing how strong and vigilant that African Americans were, where he came from, what he went through, and he continuously kept fighting, and he never gave up. And so I thank those African American warriors that have been in our communities that continually fight, and they know how it should be. And so all the people as such as us, we know what they went through. And so it's our duty to ensure that we continuously to fight for them, to rebuild, to let, make them feel like they can live a safe, quiet life at, till the end of their life. So thank you, Alderwoman Tyus.
Right. Thank you, Alderwoman, uh, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Oh, I tell you, if you all know, I've been over here snot crying. It's just really bad for me today, because I'm just so honored to hear about all of these persons that are being recognized today. But I would have to add to the Alderwoman's resolution from the first ward, because the pastor, he was a dedicated pastor. I don't know how else to say this, because Greater Mount Carmel was my church home in my young adult life for many years. And Senior Nance was a gentleman who set some standards that were extremely high. But the pastor was one of those who always wanted to be there with him, standing next to him, and doing the task of the community and their flock. And, and I was just trying to remember, I know when Senior Nance married my brother, the, the pastor that was there as a witness, when they kept saying, I was like, wait a minute, you know, you never know how you're going to encounter somebody later on. Number one, that's why you should treat everybody right and nice and, and be one who is not always about yourself. And in that church, that was what was held as a high standard, and everybody took care of each other. Because on that particular day that they married my brother, they opened up the church. It was a regular day, but my brother was about to be deployed and they opened up the church so he could get married. And so I always will be very thankful for that, for that, and I appreciate the fact that Earl Nance has fallen in his father's footsteps, continued to be a part of this community, and giving others opportunities to assist in that as associate pastors. And I see that every day. And I just want to say thank you, Alderwoman from the first ward.
Thank you, Alderwoman from the first.
Yes.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Further discussion? All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the nineteenth. Okay, Alderwoman from the first, go ahead.
And I don't usually do this, but after hearing about Reverend Jones, I think that when someone becomes a hundred and Ms. Young is still living, I am going to ask if we could have him pass in bank Resolution 203. When you, you live to be a hundred and you're still in your community, they deserve, she deserves all our names on the resolution, and I'd move that that resolution also be passed.
Moved by Alderwoman from the first and second, seconded by Alderwoman from the nineteenth. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 203 in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Alderwoman from the twenty-third, is there anything pressing?
Just quickly, very quickly, I got it by text, uh, Board Bill, uh, Resolution 220, I believe it is, that would like to make that in bank.
Oh, wow. Yeah. I almost missed that one with Young Dip. Absolutely, I would have made that. It's been moved by Alderwoman from the twenty-third that we make Resolution 220 in bank. Seconded by Alderwoman from the nineteenth and Alderwoman from the twenty-second, Alderwoman from nineteen calls herself Young Dip's mother. So, 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 all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make another copy of Resolution 220 in bank. Congratulations, Young Dip. All right, it's moved by Alderwoman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the fourth that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. All right. Introduction of my guest, introduction of my guest. Alderwoman from the twenty-third.
As always, my good friend Greg Meyer, and while we're recognizing women, my wife, who's put up with me for oh, about forty-eight years.
Yeah, she's a saint.
She need her own resolution too.
Yeah, exactly. Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
The Alderman from the twenty-third's wife needs more than a resolution, but anyway. Um, I want to introduce my friend Catherine Birch and my constituent Catherine Birch. Thank you very much.
All right. Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Lower my hand there. My honored guest today is a SLU student that actually passed this, this past week, Ms. Gabby Jonas and her family. Ms. Gabby was a master student of Health Management and Policy. So I would like to have her on the official record as my honored guest and also to request, Mr. President, a very brief moment of silence for the family of Gabby Jonas.
All right, please join me in a moment of silence for the family of Gabby Jones. Alderwoman from the twelfth, please pass on our deepest condolences to the family. All the, Alderwoman from the fourth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and, and all of the alderpeople of the board. I would like to acknowledge Mrs. Julia Allen. She's been a historian of the Veal and the Greater Veal neighborhood. And since it's Women's Month, I really would like to acknowledge her. Anything you need to know about the Veal or Greater Veal, she's the person to look up, because she is very, very knowledgeable on that. Also, Alara Hughes, who is my fourth ward developer that has developing going on in my ward as we speak. And also Carolyn Moore, she's my committee woman of the fourth ward. And also Carolyn Moore, she's my committee woman of the fourth ward. And I would like to acknowledge all of the women in the fourth ward this month for Women's Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board. First, let me recognize my baby. Anthony cousin, today is her birthday. And I'm not going to say her age, but just Alderwoman Tyus made that clear. We don't do that. But she's becoming like wine. That's all I can say. So she's getting better with age. And then I want to recognize all the women within the twenty-seventh ward for Black History, I mean, Black History. It is Black History for women and more. Thank you.
Right.
Yay.
Alderman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First of all, I want to say I still get a tingle when I hear the word Alderwoman. And the first set of people that I want to recognize are all the wonderful Alderwomen who serve on this Board of Aldermen. I'm still proud that we have so many women, and only the clerk was here when we fought that battle. Because I, I always refused to be called an Alderman. From the day I got down there, I was surprised that women had to be called Aldermen. So when we finally got that change, that was wonderful for me. And to hear the women who want to be called Alderwomen, called Alderwomen, and those who don't, that's okay, because we didn't make it that you had to. I just want to make you my special guest and say how wonderful it is to serve with all of you. Men are okay, but the women are fabulous, and I just want them to be my first special guests.
Yeah.
Second of all, I want to recognize all the women in the first, what is called the first ward, but also all the wonderful women in the city of St. Louis. This world, if we shut the women down and the women just stop for a few hours doing the things that they, that they do to make this world a better place, we couldn't operate. So we are very fortunate to be celebrating, celebrating History Month. We just celebrated Black History Month. I get to celebrate two different months. So that's wonderful for me. But just to every woman in the city, we appreciate you. We appreciate representing you. We appreciate the things that you do in our ci- a wonderful city to make it a wonderful place to live. And I want all of you, à la Sam Moore, to be my special guests. Thank you so much.
Yes.
All right, uh, I think it was the, Alderman from nineteenth, and you were next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. What I'd like, am I, okay, what I'd like to do is honor all of the women in the nineteenth ward, most especially those who serve as block captains in leadership roles and membership of the various associations, because they're all strong. And they all are very, very, very determined to make sure their communities are the best. But I can also follow the Alderwoman from the first ward, and I want to salute all women. Because I tell you, if we were not on this earth, all the multitasking that we do, all the worrying that we do on behalf of others, all the problem solving that we do with peace, and having people to be able to work together, it's usually a woman in the middle of those decisions, okay? So I, I applaud, recognize all women. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It is my honor and pleasure to recognize as my special guest Ms. Veronica Holder and her husband David. They are the founders and owners of La Mancha Coffee Shop at the corner of Fourteenth Street and St. Louis Avenue, in the heart of the fabulous Fifth Ward. That is a woman-owned business. I want to point that out in Women's History Month. I have enjoyed coffee with friends and neighbors there all the way back to the Obama administration, beginning probably in two thousand and eleven or twelve, soon after they opened. It is great with just tremendous sadness that I share that they have decided to close their business. Their last day of business will be on St. Patrick's Day. So if you get a chance to stop by and say hello, as I will on multiple occasions, please do so. I am honoring Veronica Holder and her husband David at La Mancha Coffee Shop.
Okay, let's give them a big round of applause and thank them for the business that they've done in St. Louis. And Alderman Page, maybe there are some things we could do to help them, help them stay, you know, keep the olive branch out, because if they want to stay, let's see if there's any way we can do it.
President Reed, you know I'm going to be working that hard and heavy.
All right, excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
We're moving some bills through that just may be able to help them on these things. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. As my special guest, I'd like to have Mr. Brian Rogers, the Vice President of the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, and our former clerk, Mr. David Sweeney.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Very quickly, Mr. President, women of the board, but I'm just so kind of in the emotion of the women. And it made me think back, oh, Alderwoman Tyus, and she'll notice, I'll just look it up on my phone, because I also learned this from her, the search emails, that I emailed her back on February fifth in two thousand and nineteen, the week before on your Friday meeting, because I, I always watched her meeting before I became an Alderperson. She announced about how the number was getting ready to ship, and I emailed her on that day and said, I pray I will be the fourteenth woman down there in the Board of Aldermen that you spoke of last Friday. So, in the history month, we have Washington and Meyer, especially the elder female leadership down here at the Board of Aldermen. Thank you all for all you do.
All right, and welcome, lucky fourteen. All right, any further, any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Is this a motion to adjourn, sir?
No, 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 no.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here, I believe it's still March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. This is, on this day, pardon me, in nineteen sixty-nine, Levi Strauss actually sold his first pair of bell-bottom jeans. But more important, this is middle name day. This is the day we celebrate the name that only gets used when your parents are extremely mad at you. So that's the only time I ever heard it, so I'm going to say it for everyone.
Yeah, yeah, thank you all. Before we get going, uh, so we will have to come, we will, at the end of the meeting day, we're going to recess or adjourn until the twenty-fifth, I believe, because E and A is on the twenty-third. And that's when Board Bill one eighty-four as amended, and also Board Bill eighty-two as amended, will make it through E and A. So then we can take them up on that Friday. That's all the COVID relief funding bills. So, so those will be heard by E and A on the twenty-third, and we'll take them up on the twenty-fifth. And then you all can begin your time off. Although that really doesn't count for much as an Alderman, because calls continue to come. All men, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, what, twenty twenty-two?
All men from the tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from the meeting of March fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, and Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize.
Yeah, I'd like to suspend the rules to bring the mayors and actually the, the minus the Public Safety Committee nominees for the jail oversight board to introduce that today. So I'd like to suspend that to bring their names forward today.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third. Entertained a second on that motion.
Second.
Who is that? Alderman, second by Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any further discussion? Moving to second. Madam Clerk, please call rope.
Alderwoman Tyus, aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook, aye. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans, aye. Alderman Page, aye. Alderwoman Iglesias, aye. Alderman Calder, aye. Alderwoman Rice, aye. Alderman Gunther, aye. Alderman Ballmer, aye. Alderwoman Martin, aye. Alderman Stevens, aye. Alderwoman Switzer, aye. Alderwoman Howard, aye. Alderwoman Green, aye. Alderman Altenberg, aye. Alderwoman Peo, aye. Alderman Todd, aye. Alderwoman Davis, aye. Alderwoman Spencer, aye. Alderman Mohammed, aye. Alderman Boy, aye. Alderman Bucaro, aye. Alderman Orion, aye. Alderman Kong. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, aye. Alderwoman Boyd, aye. President Reed, aye. Alderman Kong. Twenty-seven, aye votes.
I vote, stay in the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-third, suspend the rules for purposes of introducing the mayor's appointments. Madam Clerk, please place the aforementioned appointments on their agenda.
Oh, noted.
Report to city officials.
Report to city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailbox. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Airport Arts Advisory Committee. The appointment of Ms. Lois Ingram. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shore O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderwoman Tyus has her hands up.
Alderman from, Alderman from the first, are you handling this? Alderman from twenty-fifth.
She is from the first ward, and she is my nominee, so I, that's why I have my. When you're looking down like this, you cannot see me.
She'll recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Airport Arts Advisory Committee.
Um, let's see here. All right, and so what I want to say is, I am, ooh, got dizzy there, shaking my head like.
Make a motion, make a motion to adopt her, and then we'll, then there's the mothers at the end of the meeting.
And that's what I want, I have a point of clarity, a point of information, so I'm going to do her separate, because there is a group. That's what I was raising my hand about, so, okay.
If you want to do her separate, do it now, we'll approve her, and then we'll take the other ones up when we get to this actual second, second reading. Was she in the first group that came through originally?
No, she was not. She was added. And she's from North St. Louis, so I'm very proud of that.
All right, so she needs to be added here, and the ones that are second red need to be added.
All right, that's what I wanted to find out, okay? Mr. President, members of the board, I move to approve the nomination of Mrs. Lois Ingram, who is a resident of the first ward and who is actually a nominee for mine, and who is a wonderful qualified individual. If you haven't had time to look at her resume, besides being a photographer, she's been involved in the arts for all of her life.
Then moved by Alderman from the first. Second by Alderman from nineteenth. Now back to you, Alderman from the first.
Okay. Well, okay, now I move for the appointment to the Airport Advisory of Mrs. Lois Ingram.
All right, we got it. Anything else you want to add about?
Already said enough.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the nineteenth, that we had thought, that we accept the mayor's appointment to the Airport Advisory Committee, Ms. Lois Ingram. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Dear Clark Kennedy, please find below my nominations for the Detention Facilities Oversight Board. Pam Walker, Hillary Stuckey, Barbara Baker, Mike Milton, James Dom, and Tom Lawson. Sincerely to Shore O. Jones, Mayor.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-third, oh, second, Alderman from the first, you haven't been thanked before, go to Alderman from twenty-third.
I was asking, I was going to ask him a question, but so.
Hold on for a second. Let, let's get it in front of us properly. Alderman from twenty-third, you recognize on the motion to adopt the mayor's appointments to the, the detention center board.
So, so just quickly, this is part of something that.
Alderman, do you want to make a motion to, to adopt them or anything?
Well, let me ask a question, because it has to, by, by the ordinance, it goes to the Public Safety Committee where every one of these people is long, along with the ones that I had to pick separately, have to be vetted.
Okay.
So by saying, you know, by saying that it would, you want to, not going to adopt it here by ordinance, it has to go to committee.
Yeah, just make a motion that it goes, that send them to, assign them to Public Safety Committee if that's what the ordinance is.
That's what the ordinance says, but can I, can I just say something about it quickly? That, that just, I mean, everybody on the board, we all worked on this. It is the most diverse group. I mean, there's someone that's been in jail, there's legal, there's medical. I think this is going to be a pretty good thing, and everybody is welcome, you know, you know, to come to that meeting to vet this group. And I would ask that that, along with, and I believe I had to send a letter for the three that I nominated. So that would all go to committee hopefully next week.
Right, so you moving the sign of mayor's, right, to, to the Public Safety Committee. It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third, and second on.
Second.
Point of order, are these on the agenda?
Yeah, he suspended the rules.
Oh, sorry, I missed that. Okay, apologies, withdrawn.
Sorry. We move on from twenty-third and take the sex, second. Second it by the Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question regarding procedure. Are we able to send these to committee in this session and possibly not hear them until next session? Or will we have to come back for a public safety meeting before signing die?
Well, it just depends on when they turn them around, because we still have signing die ahead of us and everything else. So it's still appropriate to send them to committee. Just depends on if this committee gets through the approval process and gets them back out to us in time to have them on that final agenda.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification.
From the twenty-third, you haven't been recognized. Any, anything for Alderman from six?
No, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Okay, any further discussion, any further discussion? All right, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third, second by Alderman from twenty-second that we send the aforementioned appointments to the Public Safety Committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Oh, noted. That's extent of reported city officials.
Right. Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes, please.
I, I'm sorry, I might have missed this. I was curious about, um, we have, we have two letters on nominations to the Airport Arts Advisory Committee, and I.
That's going to be on the, because they're second red, so that, that's on the second red calendar at the end.
Got it. Okay, all right, thank you so much.
All right, you're welcome. Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our inform accounters? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our inform account? I love you all, thank you for that, dispense with line items eight through twelve, second, second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of hoods with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill eighty-two as amended sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Evans, Alderman Howard, and Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement and authorizing the mayor or designated to apply for and accept funds pursuant to federal appropriation under the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one containing the severability clause and emergency clause. Board Bill fifty-one, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Page, and ordinance pertaining to the special use district establishing the geospatial protection and enhancement special use district, providing definitions and finding, and findings pertaining to said GPE and SUD. Further providing use regulations for said GPE and SUD and contain the severability clause. That is extent of second reading report of standing committees.
All right, we dispense with line item fourteen, protection, uh, Alderman from the third.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules.
Uh, we're gonna have, we have another meeting coming up on the twenty-fifth where we, where we're gonna take up all of those bills.
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you, uh. Perfection, perfection consent.
Board Bill eighty-four, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Negracia and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizes the city by and through its Department of Health to accept the COVID-nineteen and adult vaccination supplemental program services contract grant award for up to one hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services over a period of three years from February the first, two thousand and twenty-one, through January the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and enter into and fulfill the program services contract under said grant and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-five sponsored by Alderman Todd, Alderman Evans, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Pam Boyd, Alderman Jeffrey Boyd, Alderman Davis, and Alderman Middlebrook, and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Dr. Samuel W. Hilton Junior Way pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the intersection of Fountain Avenue and Auburn Avenue and run eastern Fountain Avenue to the intersection of Fountain Avenue and Bayard Avenue. Board Bill one ninety-four sponsored by Alderman Howard and Alderman Tyus, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing the director of the Department of Public Safety or his designated on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute a U.S. Department of Justice two thousand and twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to accept funds awarded. Appropriating said funds and authorizing the Department of Public Sa- Safety to expand appropriate funds for allowed purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two eleven sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance establishing the Third Ward Residential Parking District and location and restriction for current parking within the Third Ward Residential Parking District and authorizing the placement of permit parking only signs and prohibiting the parking of any vehicle in the district that does not display the required permit and providing for a penal penalty for violations and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-one sponsored by Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Boyd and Alderman Todd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement appropriating to the Department of Parks Recreation and Forestry a portion of funds originally appropriated in ordinance number seven one two four six to the St. Louis Development Corporation for maintenance of land reutilization authority properties and contain an emergency clause, that is extent of perfection consent calendar.
Right, um. Alderman from the tenth. You recognize on the motion for the perfection consent town.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from tenth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from fourteenth, any discussion? All in favor, signal five, I say an I.
I.
Hi.
Hi.
I.
Oppose, motion carries, board bills for perfection.
Board Bill two zero six, committee sub-sponsored by Alderman Altenberg, and ordinance amended ordinance number seven one three four five, commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two by the addition of a new line item, Police Department Real-Time Crime Center and Amending Ordinance Number seven one three nine three to reappropriate two point five million dollars of the five million dollars of the two thousand and twenty-one coronavirus local fiscal recovery recover funds appropriated to the Police Department for Police Department overtime, the Real-Time Crime Center.
Right, Alderman from the sixteenth, we recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number two oh six, committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to perfect, Board Bill two oh six, committee substitute.
Move by Alderman from sixteen.
Second.
Second about Alderman from twenty-second, Alderman from the sixteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board, this is a reappropriation bill, if you recall, uh, very quickly, I'll give some backdrop here, Board Bill two appropriated five million dollars for uniformed police overtime, that was the first tranche, uh, and first appropriation of, uh, coronavirus relief funds in ARPA dollars. Uh, five million was, was, um, appropriated to uniformed police overtime. Uh, the reason for that being that ninety-eight officers, uh, funded, however vacant, but funded for the use of overtime was cut from the city's fiscal budget. It was restored with ARPA dollars, to date, about two weeks ago, uh, that money has not been spent or utilized on overtime. In fact, uh, police have been underspent on overtime to the tune of one point four million dollars, which has, which has bucked historical trends. Typically, police are anywhere over the last ten or fifteen years, somewhere between four million to eleven million dollars over uh, budget on, on overtime and, and if you recall, the financial footwork we've done in the past is utilizing those funded yet vacant uniformed office positions in the budget to balance that overspending on overtime. Now, with the five million dollars appropriated and only four months left in the year, uh, less than four months left in the fiscal year, um, I think it's, um, appropriate and at the request of, uh, and the urging of the chief along with, uh, the Real-Time Crime Center, that half of those dollars, half of that five million for overtime be appropriated to the Real-Time Crime Center for the needs and the uses that those folks have there. So the two point five, it's, we're simply creating a new line item in this ordinance that just says, still going to the police department, uh, but it's going to go to the Real-Time Crime Center with the intended use, uh, to, uh, purchase equipment, especially cameras and upgrade their network, uh, software and fiber upgrades that are necessary. So about three hundred cameras can probably be purchased with this two point five plus, uh, four hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand worth of network upgrades that are, that are required. And we trust the folks in the Real-Time Crime Center to, um, the, the experts in the intelligence division to place these cameras where they're needed. There also need to replace some cameras, so up to some eight hundred cameras that the city police department has right now, you know, a good thirty-five or forty cameras and you just need to be simply replaced and the, this would allow a mechanism for that to take place. I'll stop there, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, with Alderman from the sixteenth, you.
Alderman from the sixteenth, we yield a question to Alderman from twenty-second.
I will.
Alderman from twenty-second, please proceed.
Yeah, um, Alderman, did you get a commitment from, um, the public safety director that they would do a study citywide as far as best use of the cameras?
I don't know if, if it rose to level of a commitment, there's certainly nothing in writing, but, but, but Alderman, you were, you were at that committee hearing, I think the, the director of public safety wants to analyze where all cameras are located and where all cameras are to be located. He made it pretty clear that I think he wanted even a third party to do a plan or an analysis uh, that would, uh, that would evaluate the current camera use and where, where new cameras or additional cameras, if you will, should be placed.
And there's nothing in this ordinance that would not allow them to use these funds to help with the, uh, the report.
You bet, you bet, Alderman, and I think if that's a priority and two point five million dollars comes to a line item of Real-Time Crime Center, last time I checked, the police department rolls up to the director of public safety in his office, and if he wants to, uh, marshal a plan and have a third party use these funds for third-party analysis of where exactly to place uh, current and or additional cameras, I would imagine that this is written that vague for, to allow him to do so, so the, the plan would be in his court if he wants to generate one.
Would you mind if I add my name as a co-sponsor?
I would enjoy that greatly, Alderman, thank you.
Mr. President, please add my name as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, Mr. President, will be, um, sponsor of the Alderman from the sixteen deal for a question?
Alderman from the sixteenth, we yield a question to Alderman from the fourteenth.
I will.
Alderman from the fourteenth, please proceed.
Um. Alderman Altenberg, would this be able to be add, would they be able to add more, um, I don't, I can't remember what they call it, but the, uh, underground filament that supports the cameras so they could be placed in areas where there is no, um, I guess wiring for it, I guess, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, fiber, fiber upgrades, not only, not only the upgrades, yeah, most of the city has fiber, uh, but it's not lit. So part of, uh, extending cameras or putting additional cameras throughout the city and in places where they, where the, I know the folks in the intelligence division would like them, that would be part of this analysis, and that means we buy, you know, let fifty less cameras so we can extend fiber to an area that, that is troubled or that, that does need to be surveilled. Uh, these funds could certainly be used for that.
So I guess when you said lit, uh, would that, that would be part of this too?
Yeah, where there's, where there's dark fiber, don't ask me to technically explain the difference between light and dark, I would just know that there's a wire under the ground and, and it needs to, it needs to get a, you know, something added to it.
Yeah.
To, to become lit and, and, and be fiber optic optimal for cameras.
Yeah, because there's a lot of areas that could use the cameras but don't have the, the fiber to support it, so, okay, good to know. And I'd like to also be added as a co-sponsor, please, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, Alderman from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to request a roll call.
Okay, thank you, Alderman, Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change, Alderman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, so I was gonna ask for a roll call also, I made my record a few weeks ago that I was, was going to be a, uh, present on this, uh, particular board bill, I wasn't gonna vote for it, but I still had some concerns. Um, so I will be voting present, and I don't need to go into those reasons anymore.
All right, thank you, Alderman, Alderman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, with the Alderman from the sixteen deal.
Alderman from the sixteen, we yield a question to Alderman from the thirteenth.
Certainly.
Thirteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, can you tell me how this number two point five million came to be?
Uh, yeah, I believe that, uh, came from the, uh, intelligence division and the, uh, Real-Time Crime Center, it's been the number for, I, quite a while now, I think that's maybe not been public, but certainly has been shared with public safety over the last year, year and a half of um, allowing the, what the uses and or needs were of that particular division within the police department.
So then I get that, that's, thank you, um, so in the, um, board bill one eighty-four, one? The one that we just, I, it's eighty-four million and one eighty-one, I think, um, that had a million for cameras in it, so is that different from the two point four, two point five that the Real Crime Center requested, or why is it not one point five then?
Sure is, it sure is, all the women, so the, the million dollars that, that was, uh, line item and appropriated in Board Bill one eighty-four uh, for eighty-six million dollars of capital improvements, uh, it was eighty-four though, so I can see the confusion, but the two million added, uh, but the million for cameras, uh, is for the, uh, environmental investigation unit to be, to be used specifically for illegal dumping in alleyways, so to replace those antiquated cameras, different set of cameras altogether, um, and to, uh, provide additional cameras so they can be at both ends of the alley, um, wireless and feed into the Real-Time Crime Center.
Okay, do you, and do you have an idea of, in, you know, where these cameras are gonna be used, is it just, we just buying a lot of cameras, putting them out, uh, if there's a plan that comes out, or can you just give me a little bit more information about that?
I'd like to have them all over my house personally, Alderman, if, uh, if I had my, my druthers, but no, I, I suspect we can trust the, uh, the folks in the Real-Time Crime Center to work on said plan that was suggested and or third-party analysis to find out that we're placing these in the, in the spots where they need to be. I think if you ask the, the intelligence division, uh, team down there, they'll, they want to put them in the areas that uh, see the upticks in crime and where they can position additional or enhance already where cameras exist, so we know that license plate recognition reading cameras are vital to tracking, uh, automobiles that are either stolen or have committed a crime. And this is very safe for our officers, that technology, because the Real-Time Crime Center can monitor them all over the city without having hot pursuits. And then when, uh, the vehicle rests, uh, officers can pursue and make a, a, a much safer arrest associated with, with an environment as opposed to, as opposed to chasing a speeding car. So I think it would be, they would fortify some of the areas that they exist, uh, because when you're talking about, um, you know, the two violent crimes a day that these cameras solve, uh, it's about fortifying and strengthening and or amplifying where you already have existing cameras and adding more to the, to the Alderman from the fourteenth point to areas of the city where we don't have them yet. So I think part of that analysis that was mentioned that they could use some of this money to, to, uh, get that expertise uh, as well as listening to the Real-Time Crime Center, where to put them would be, it was where I suspect they would go.
Okay, thank you very much for that, I, I, um, you know, I'm, do you know how many cameras are currently in the city of St. Louis doing this work, or?
I think if you count the third, I'm sorry, were you finished, I didn't want to.
No, that's, that's, yeah, I, I, I meant kind of alley cam, I don't know of alley cameras, all of that's all connected to the same place, so, you know, what, how many cameras would you say we're adding to the work you're talking about?
I, I know the Real-Time Crime Center monitors about a thousand, and that includes, uh, a handful that are businesses and or, uh, private cameras that want to and or volunteer to federate into the Real-Time Crime Center. I think the city may own through the police department, uh, streets and others, maybe seven, eight hundred, I could have that wrong, I do know it's over a thousand all-in with what's monitored by the Real-Time Crime Center, and I assume that, that, that would not include the, the alley, uh, trash cameras. Because as we know, that's antiquated technology whereby an officer has to go out and get the technology downloaded by hand and then synthesize it, analyze it, and then pursue their investigation.
Right. Yeah, I, I speak with residents on the thirteenth board about cameras pretty frequently, and I think the alley cameras and the, and catching people doing the dumping and being able to do that, that monitoring more in real time is certainly something that, that people in the thirteenth board want to see more of. I think in general, there is also a desire for, for more cameras, uh, as well from the, from my residents, um, you know, my concern is, uh, and if anyone on the board has information about this, you know, I'd really appreciate it if you would speak up, but whether or not this is the sort of technology that actually improves safety and decreases crime, or if it's the sort of technology that makes our citizens more watched and, um, their rights of privacy taken away. Um, and I, I don't have that data in front of me, and that's a sincere question, so if there's someone who could speak more to that, I'd really appreciate it, um, and I appreciate you taking the time to yield to my questions.
All right, thank you, Alderman from thirteenth, uh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if Alderman from the sixteenth would yield.
Alderman from the sixteenth, we yield a question to Alderman from the first.
Will, yes.
Uh, thank you, um, Alderman, um, and you kind of touched upon what I was gonna ask you, you separated the alley trash cameras from the real-time cameras, um, who controls the alley trash cameras, is that through the police or is that through the refuse department?
Uh, it's in cooperation with, with both, the street department, uh, actually, and, uh, Environmental Investigation Unit, which is a, a, a subdivision of the police department.
Okay, but you find that these alley trash cameras, you find that they are not up to date and, I guess, not effective because you have to actually go out and download what would happen and then bring it back into, uh, the office rather than. Uh, the office rather than seeing it in real time, is that what your concern is about these cameras?
Uh, for, for the trash cameras specifically, yes, all the women, I, 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 I would say that they're certainly effective. But if the technology was better, they would be more effective, so there were six hundred and fifty charges, and we're kind of compartmentalizing things here. But if we're speaking just about trash cameras, alley cameras, uh, you know, that are around for illegal dumping. There were six hundred and fifty charges brought, uh, last year for illegal dumping, seventy percent of those were able to be brought because of the current antiquated cameras. Uh, that we bought back in two thousand seventeen and, and a, a couple of years after that. Uh, but, but the million dollars that's, that's, that's line item and appropriated in board bill one eighty-four. Is to buy a hundred new cameras specifically for the Environmental Investigation Unit. To start swapping out those old cameras with newer cameras that last longer and can federate into the Real-Time Crime Center.
Okay, and what is the cost difference between the old cameras and the new cameras, do you know?
Uh, I couldn't tell you what the difference is in the old cameras, I, I don't have the number in front of me of what the, what the old cameras cost. Um, I do know the new cameras probably all-in with, with, uh, monthly licensing or annual licensing and fees are around anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars.
Eight to ten thousand?
Yes.
And for how many?
Uh, for the alley cameras, I think it's about ten thousand dollars, we'll get you, uh.
How many cameras are we talking about at eight to ten thousand?
In the alley, in the alley, that we approach, they'll get them about a hundred cameras.
A hundred cameras, and so then we pay a month, monthly license fee of how much?
I don't know what that is, but it's all included in the, in the number of, uh, you know, uh, the, um, ten thousand dollar. I think it's built into the ten thousand dollars per camera.
So ten thousand dollars per camera? So, and then, um. So that comes to a total you said of a hundred thousand dollars, or what did you say?
We're buying a hundred of them at ten thousand.
A hundred at ten, for ten thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, and the old, uh, cameras, do we pay a license fee, licensing fee, do you know?
We do, we do, it's pretty nominal, I'm not sure what it is a year to, I, I apologize, I don't have that figure.
No, 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 I'm gonna, actually, I'm the chair of streets, I, I will find out myself, uh, just thought you might know that. Um, and so, um, will we still be keeping up the old cameras that we do not upgrade, will we still be using those?
Yeah, the Environmental Investigation Unit will keep that, because I think they've got about two hundred and twenty-seven to be, to be as close as precise as, as possible, at least from the report. Um, they've got about two hundred and twenty-seven of these older cameras that they bought. And they do have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue stream year over year to, to update equipment. Um, and, and buy new cameras, uh, but that only gets you so many cameras a year. So the, the hope, the hope was to give them a, a, you know, sort of a, a, a good shot in the arm here to buy a hundred over the next year and a half. Um, or less to begin to swap out those two twenty-seven.
And how is the decision made of where to locate these cameras?
In their report, in the Environmental Investigation Unit's report, um, the, it indicated it would be where the troubled wards and troubled alleys are. So most of these cameras, I think, are in the fifth and sixth police districts currently monitoring alleys. Uh, and I think, um, ward, uh, two and. Four were some of the, some of the, the highest wards, at least in terms of, um, uh, calls for service.
And when you say troubled, uh, wards, is it the trouble is in the alley as in illegal dumping? Or is it trouble in the alleys that adds in other crimes, because trouble can come in different ways in an alley?
The fair point, all the women, yes, troubled I meant by bad actors dumping illegally or unlawfully dumping trash.
Okay, I have no further questions, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-third.
And just, you know, for those that are worried about, you know, Big Brother and all that. I just wanna remind anybody that watches the news, that last week when that young girl was kidnapped. You know, they were able to trace her through different states and arrest the person, you know. So the, these things, if you carry a cell phone, you're tracked. You know, these things are important, that the, the, you know, uh, you know, the, the, the ones that trace where you're at. I, I just think they're important for solving crime, so I just wanted to throw that out there, it just. Again, in the case of a kidnapping like it was, what, last week on the news, they were able to find the lady that kidnapped. It was a, a mom kidnapped her daughter, but, uh, they were able to find her and, uh, arrest her. Without these kind of devices, that they, she could have taken that baby anywhere. So, uh, anyway, that, I just wanted to mention that.
All right, thank you, Alderman, Alder, Alder one from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I. I'm concerned about this bill in that there's been sort of conflicting information about whether or not. This is actually going to be used to, uh, purchase cameras or if, uh, the Public Safety Director is going to use this money for. Um, a citywide plan, or if this is going to be used for fiber. And I, I think my, my discomfort around this comes from not having a plan. Um, I know that we do have a lot of technology that needs upgraded, and that was part of the conversation, um, that existing cameras need. Need to be fixed, um, and so it's, it's unclear to me, sort of a line item breakdown of, of where this money is going to go. And, um, to the Alderman from the thirteenth question about statistics and, you know, do we know whether or not. Um, cameras are being useful, I think that's one of the questions that we're, we're hoping to get the answer to, is, you know, what. Where, where are cameras placed that are being most effective, where, you know, what, what type of way could we lay out? Cameras throughout the city that would have the most effect on, um, solving crimes, um, cameras don't prevent crime. Um, not interpersonal crime, they sometimes prevent, um, property crime if they're visible. Um, but not, like, so we have, we have different types of technology that are trying to accomplish different effects, um, so. I, I, I'm, I guess my, my discomfort still lies from not being entirely sure where this money is going to be spent. And it feels a bit like a blank check over to the Real-Time Crime Center, um, for the two point five million dollars, um, and if it's. I, I, yeah, I, I guess I just don't see the urgency to put this forward, um. Without, without a plan or without sort of the line item that we normally, like the specificity that we normally ask for in these types of allocations. Um, so, that, that's just, I, I don't know if there, there's more information, but from the conversation in public safety. It seems as though we were, we're saying that this could be used for a lot of different things, but we aren't entirely sure where exactly it will be used. And whether or not, um, public safety and the chief are on board, um, with which of those plans, um, so that's. That's my discomfort and, and, uh, I'm not sure if this is something that we can continue to work on. Or if, or if the Alderman from the sixteenth has sort of an, an, an amendment that has, um. Sort of a line item detail onto it or an attachment or an exhibit, um, that would be interesting to see, but, um, yeah, I. I'm just uncomfortable with where we are in it right now.
All right, thank you, all the one from A, all the one from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, as I have sat through the Public Safety Committee meetings. Set through neighborhood meetings where, uh, these items were discussed, most especially troubled north Saint Louis. Neighborhoods, uh, it has been very clear. The number of cameras that are going to be purchased for the Real Crime Center system. It has been very clear from the environmental group, uh, environmental investigators, they are data-driven. They gave us data in every way you could possibly think of, uh, and to constitute. Improving the cameras, to have more modern cameras, to detect the dumping that is going on. And many other things, as was mentioned in alleys, we've had several murders in alleys, uh, in the last month. And a number of shootings, uh, so, uh, I don't know how much more. I do know, as they stated to us in those meetings, everything is data-driven. So they, they have their reports for where the most crime is, uh, detected. Uh, from various other methods that we also employ. I do know from being there, from the very first, uh, discussion of the Real Crime Center. It was picked up from the central corridor that had already been buying cameras and using them. In their business districts and in some neighborhoods to detect crime. Uh, it was discussed that if we had a centralized system that the police department could monitor and use. For, uh, most especially solving cases, uh, on rare occasions, in the real-time, uh. Uh, designation, you can see a crime being committed. And move swis, swifter and faster with the police presence. But because they are everywhere and we are connected to all other cameras that other people have. I'm so happy that businesses have chosen to, uh, put their cameras into the system. Uh, we do know that our highways, uh, our, uh. Business sectors where we have large corporations and or event spaces, their cameras are there. And we can follow and track people better that have committed crimes, because you see, it's very important that we, uh, arrest as well. We are designated as one of the most unlawful cities in America right now. So all of the rhetoric that wants to talk about people's privacy. You have no privacy, you have no privacy when you are awake or asleep. So please understand that, uh, I am in full support of this, because we need more help. We cannot continue to try to live in the environments that we are living in. And if you could just look and see every day what I see. All the dumping that is just so ridiculous. Right now, I'm focusing behind the Shion High School, because that's one of the number one dumping sites. And I'm sure the Alderman from the third ward sees it as well, because we share that space back there. But we're, you know, the, the residents who live over there, the students who attend that school, the teachers who are there trying to teach. They shouldn't have to deal with all of that every day. And so everything is based on data, as Dr. Isom has shared with us many, many times. He is a data-driven manager. So if we would listen closer. And also, taken, take our other biases out of the equation. I think we would see that the approach is very well, um. Directed by Dr. Isom, and it will be in the future. I'm hoping that we can even have more cameras, because we do need them for the city of Saint Louis. Everybody comes here from the region, because they know. That we don't have enough resources here, and that the culture has changed in this city. From all the rhetoric that has been put out here about, please, you know. Uh, police are, are wrong, police are this, police are that, you know what? You've got a bad apple in everything that operates on God's green earth, okay? So yes, we will have some bad police officers, and, and I guarantee you that we will handle those police officers. Now, when you get into the courts of justice, that's a whole nother ballgame, and you, at this Board of Aldermen, we don't have any power over that. But we need to make sure that those who do, do their job and take care of that part of what is needed. But right now, when we can provide additional resources to help alleviate some of these problems. We need to be about our business, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, all the one from the nineteenth, Alderman from the twelfth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I would like to speak on the bill.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, sorry, that was also an opportunity for me to lower my hand, uh, in this virtual meeting, but, um. I am not opposed to more cameras, I do know that my constituents sent here in twelve, uh, both in Boulevard Heights and Princeton Heights. Support, um, more public safety initiatives and measures, and in fact, the manager of the Real-Time Crime is just like a, a stone throw away for me. So, um, I'll absolutely be picking his brain over this, but I want to point out that. You know, the dominating narrative of this, uh, of this question, of this board bill, has dealt with the cameras itself in the recording of information. And I, I'd like to sort of take a step back and make it broader in how is that information utilized? And I don't think that there's a city in this country that is presently able to, to answer that question. And, dear members of the board, I'm absolutely dipping into my, my career working in public libraries. Where the cornerstone, the very foundation is privacy, um. License plate readers, not opposed, I mean, if you're able to find a vehicle that has been stolen or that for other reasons, uh, needs a police intervention. Excellent, but my concern is with, uh, the acquisition of data for facial recognition purposes or anything else. We always come back to cell phones, right, like, well, we carry cell phones and they track us, I'm deciding to carry the cell phone. I'm not saying that this board bill or that the Real-Time Crime Center currently utilizes facial recognition technology. Or even has the funding or capabilities of using, of using algorithmic technology in this process. I think it's insane that we have a thousand cameras and yet we have a, a relatively small staff for the Real-Time Crime Center. I think we need to look at the staffing and expanding the staffing of it, um, more so than the, the cameras. But my concern is that this city, this state, this country doesn't have any parameters for the usage of. The algorithmic technology nor any barriers from it being introduced at a later date. So again, I totally recognize I'm taking a big step back, um, looking at a, a much broader ethical question. Um, a much broader technological question that this board bill does not seek to answer, uh, but. I, on the basis of, we don't have any other parameters, um, that does address my concerns. Or a preparedness that would speak to my concerns about the potential for future usage of facial recognition technology. Or other data accrual, um, uh, digital features. I, at this present moment, will have to be a, on this board bill, so with that, Mr. President and dear colleagues, I, I yield back.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I, I'm just curious and I would like to ask a few of my colleagues a question, uh, with the Alderman from the fifteenth, you have a quick question.
All along from the fifteenth, we yield a question until Alderman from the twenty-second.
Sure.
Alderman from twenty-second, please proceed.
Alderman, have you ever visited the Real Crime Center, Real-Time Crime?
Probably two or three times.
Okay, thank you, with Alderman from the eighth, you?
Alderman from the eighth, we yield a question until Alderman from twenty-second.
Sure.
All on the same question, have you visited the, the Real-Time Crime Center before?
Yes, multiple times.
Okay, thank you, all one from the thirteenth, you?
All one from thirteen, we yield a question to the.
Sure.
Same question.
I haven't, and I'd love more information about it.
Okay, thank you, and, and the reason I, I don't wanna presume certain people have been there, um, but I know I have, and. Well, the first thing I wanna say is that, um. Cameras cannot prevent crime, right, we know that, but cameras can deter crime. And that's very important, and I think you can Google and look at all kind of studies that will prove that to be true. Therefore, cameras are just one tool in the toolbox for the police. We as citizens are not guaranteed any privacy when we're in the open, public space. If we're at home, no one should be peeping into our homes, but if you're outside, you have no privacy. Whatever you're doing, you're doing out in the open, um, unless you or a family have been a victim of a crime. And but for a camera, it was solved, you're very appreciative of that camera. You're very appreciative, it was exciting to me to go to the Real-Time Crime Center, because they were actually able to track a car that. The LPR, the license plate reader bane, I mean, it made a loud noise like a glass cracker, and they were able to follow this car across the city practically. And apprehend somebody, I thought that was fascinating, imagine if somebody kidnapped a child. And we use that technology and we brought that child safely home to their parent. We would be heroic, um, I. I'm sorry, I don't get it, you know, some of the fears that some people have about too many cameras. I do support facial recognition. We, as the Alderman from the nineteenth ward said, this is one of, probably one of the most unsafe cities in America. You can almost do whatever you want to do in the city of St. Louis. It's hard for the police. Our homicide rate of solving crimes is less than fifty percent. I think I last time I heard it was less than thirty-five percent. Less than thirty-five percent. People speed up and down our streets like it's a drag race strip with immunity almost. Cameras help. They will not stop, but they do deter crime. So I just encourage everybody, you know, to stand with the majority of the citizens in the city. I love the fact that the Alderman from the thirteenth, you know, acknowledged that a lot of her constituents, they like the cameras. Alderman from the twelfth, I think I heard him say that as well. So if your constituents are saying that, I'm, I'm going to be all in with cameras. Period. With that, thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. And before we move to Alderman from the third, I've gotten a number of messages that Core Faith Walker, former state representative, Core Faith Walker has passed away. Don't know, hasn't been confirmed, but all you may be getting the same message. If it is true, please reach out to her family. Alderman from the third.
Yeah, that's one heck of a message. Wow, definitely, if anything has happened to Ms. Walker, in our condolences and we pray that she pulls through, if anything is going on with her period, prayers power and numbers when we pray. You know, with that, take a moment, if you don't mind, and just do that. I mean, get that type of, you know, we get one life and who knows how important these little seconds that we have are. So we can just take a moment. Thank you all for letting us wake up this morning and be alive and get health. Thank you for all the great things you've ever done for us, all the things that you pray on doing for us in the future. We ask that you shield, God protect and heal every ligament bone and part of Ms. Core Faith, Ms. Core Walker's body, anything or any problem that she's having with her body. We ask that she heal her, we ask that she surround her with family members who can put their hands on her and give her the energy and the faith needed to pull through any type of situation she's going through right now. We ask you to give her family faith and the power of healing these moments. Thank you. As far as the cameras go, I completely understand everybody's concern with them. There is a lot of ways that our information could be taken, stolen, misused. And it has been not necessarily in this city, but in other cities across the United States. We don't have, from my understanding, any agreements with any outside companies within this city who take our information and put it together and compose it. Our departments do that. So, you know, generally, when you have contracts, third-party contracts with different companies, like camera companies that you go out and they give us the cameras free in exchange for our information. That's not what we do. You know, we actually pay for these cameras. So we don't do that. We, let me, let me make sure, I guess, can I ask Alderman Davis?
Alderman from the nineteenth, do you yield for questions to Alderman from the third?
Yes.
I see shaking your head. I just want to, if you can clarify, I want to be right in what I'm saying.
No, we absolutely do not make deals where we're going to share our information with anybody. That is just an absolute no.
I just wanted to make sure I was right.
A thousand percent, I'd be against it.
Understood. Well, I appreciate it. Yes, I just wanted to make sure. I do look at my colleagues sometimes when they're like right there on my screen. So I saw you shaking your head. I want to make sure I was right. That's because that's my understanding also that we don't share information. You know, we don't have any obligations. We don't have any contracts. This is our information. So, you know, that's why you don't never really see things leaked unless our departments decide to put that information out there. I think, you know, with this board bill in particular, just being honest, I love the fact that we getting cameras. But on the flip side of it, I don't like the fact, just, you know, as a few other Alder people said, there aren't any line items in it. I voted for it and I love the fact that we are looking at now and doing what we need to do with some of these funds to secure our city. I do think we also need to pay attention to whatever studies we looking at doing. I hope that it's in the house if we looking at a third party. We need to see what that third party is looking at charging us. Everybody know we got some money. So I want to be clear, there is no way we should be paying $12,000 per camera with these ARPA funds like we've been paying for some of these studies. We don't need a $24,000, $50,000 study. Let's just be clear. Each Alder person can call CSB right now and I guarantee you can get the calls for service from your community. And then you yourself know your community. So you know where the hotspots are. We know what's going on in our wards. So if you compile that information with us and we can look at all of the different streets that coincide with other Alder people's problems, we all got a problem on page. I think it's like seven of us that got, what, Martin Luther King? If you hit Martin Luther King up, then you just covered seven Alder people. Same thing, you know, with some of the other Alder people on the South Side and other places. If we put our information together and we compile that and then have one of our departments put that into some type of comprehensive plan, we're not paying thousands of dollars for somebody that we got to go back and forth to the table with who's going to spend an hour. They don't charge us about an hour. Everybody know this city got money. I want to be clear about that. We spend thousands of dollars on studies all the time, right? We got shootings going on every single day. This is not about being preventative and it's just being real. We looking at crime right now as something that we can prevent. This is a cultural thing. You know, jail is not deterring our kids right now. I mean, literally, you get jailed, you get clout right now. Our culture, you sell more records when you go to jail than when you don't. It's interesting. I mean, you got to really think about that. When somebody dies in our communities, you get more clout for being a gangster when you dead than you did when you was alive. Like, it's very, very interesting, but it's true. It's a cultural thing. So we have to hit that on a people's level. But if we want to be, you know, proactive and catching people and letting folks know that you can't do certain things in the city, we got to start putting things out there to where we can actually have eyes where individuals who actually see are not willing to say something, but the camera don't have nobody to talk to. The camera is not afraid. It don't care what sets you from. It don't care if you come back and shoot it because it can be replaced. It has, you know, it's not, it don't have feelings. We do. We know what comes back in our communities. We know folks got cars that come back in a different one and shoot it up. They know you on them where I could tell them, right? There's a lot going on and us, you know, for us to be the most dangerous city in the United States and tech, you know, technically, I would be the most dangerous ward. I had the most homicides in the city last year. And there's nothing to brag on. That absolutely sucks. Just in the last few days, I've had people killed. You know, a good, nice man, Mr. Mike Kelly, was just murdered two days ago. And that was an amazing man. He helped people. The man had properties. He was looking to sell some and wanted to sell to the community. He was looking for the right people. And the community members killed him. Man, that's messed up, man. This is a cool dude. And if we had cameras around that area, we've been, well, I won't say we didn't, but if we had cameras around the surrounding area, maybe they would have thought twice. You know, and that's, that's just thought. Of course, we got to go after, you know, and be reactive right now and do the best we can to catch those individuals. But the thing is, it already has happened. I think once people start seeing regularly that in these particular corridors, driving down Grand Natural Bridge, hitting the highways, we can see you, people will stop hitting those particular areas. So I will ask Mr. Oldenburg for this, Alderman Oldenburg. If it's possible, we all know that everybody utilizes the highways as a way to get out the city. We know that. As soon as they do something in the inner city, they hit them highways and they gone. Because we not chasing them to St. Anne Jennings. We just not doing that most of the time. But if we can hit those LPRs, if we can make sure they are along the exits along the highways on seventy and forty, we know when those people come into the city at that point. So at bare minimum, we can start getting those dings on our highways. And we know everybody using the highways. Let them go through Natural Bridge because St. Charles going to pick them up. That North County co-op don't play. We know that. You know, it's a different type of, let's force them into the neighborhoods and make them utilize our inner city, our inner neighborhood highways, Natural Bridge, Grand. Make them use those to get out the city. Somebody going to pick them up in that county and they will chase them. What it is that we want to do, we got to start looking at this in a strategic way. You know, and it's only like ten to twenty cameras. I think about ten of them along seventy, twenty along forty. Don't get me doing numbers and things like that. I haven't even really looked that piece up. It's just, once again, I know everybody's concerned about the camera piece. We really need to ensure the technology is a piece of what it is that we utilize to start being proactive in the city and not only deterring crime, but catching crime when it actually happens. Everybody doing it because they can get away with it. I mean, it's as simple as that. You can get away with it, you're going to get away with it. And we're allowing folks to get away with it. I know the board bill probably need more structure. We got more money coming, but the summer is coming tomorrow. And I mean, for a lot of folks who going to wake up when it's sixty degrees, it's summertime. Everybody's been in the house these last few years for COVID. You got to know why these shootings just happen. That's because you've been doing a whole lot of talking in the house, doing a whole lot of stuff and want to go hide. We out here this summer. Every day where the sun shining, we going to have shootings. If we don't start at bare minimum, throwing some things up there where folks are getting caught so we don't have them in the repeat area. So with that, with that being said, I appreciate everybody's opinion. I do believe in the importance of having this line item because we know money gets lost. But, I mean, this is just one of those times. We ain't got time to wait. You know, let's make sure we hold the police accountable when we give them the money and we monitor it. It's as simple as that. Where the cameras are going, how much money are we spending? It's our job to ensure that the money is being spent the way that it's supposed to be, even if we lined item. That don't mean they don't spend it the right way. Like, people, it'd be, it'd be a lot of stuff going on. So with that, I believe that the police department wants to do the right thing. We want them to do the right thing. You know, we just got to work collectively and getting them the tools that they need. So with that being said, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Alderman from the third. Alder woman from the fourth for the first time.
Thank you, madam, Mr. Chair and board members. All I want to say, I am for the cameras. When I drive through my ward and I see the dumping, see the trash, that they, people come into the city to do their dumping. And it doesn't make sense when, if you live in the city, you can dump for free. You've got at least twelve dumpings a year for free that you don't have to pay for. So I am for the cameras so we can catch these people that are violating that. Because, you know, it's a shame to drive through your neighborhood and see the trash in the alleys, the dumpings and so forth. And, you know, no one wants to live in and around that type of environment. So I am for it. I am for the cameras. Sitting here in this board meeting, I heard a gunshot in the distance. I don't know where it came from, but I heard it. So even with the cameras, okay, I don't know if that was gunshot this way, but anyway, you hear these things and I'm for the cameras for the effect that they can have on our, on improving our community. And with that, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will the Alderman from the sixteenth yield for a few questions?
Yes, Alderman from the sixteenth will yield a question until Alderman from the ninth.
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the ninth, please proceed.
Oh, thank you, Alderman from the sixteenth. So I have to admit that I am mixed on this for a number of reasons. But, so the first question is going to be pretty simple here. So just looking at my drive, we have a, we have board bill two oh six committee substitute. We also have two oh six committee substitute as amended. Is, which one are we, have we amended this already or do you plan on amending or? Cue answer, yeah, just, are we on two oh six committee substitute as amended?
No, no amendment has been introduced, Alderman.
Okay, because I'm, I didn't think so, but I'm, I'm reading through the drive that we have, which has two, has two oh six committee sub, two oh six committee sub as amended. So thank you for that clarification. And then the second question that I have on this, and so I have quite a few cameras in the ninth ward, the pant tilt and the LPRs. I have recently sent a email to our chief because about a week ago, I witnessed a hit and run accident on South Jefferson where we have pant tilt cameras at South Jefferson in Wyoming and South Jefferson in Utah. Both intersections have pant tilt cameras. The responding officer got there. There was a hit and run. The driver abandoned the vehicle, took off running right in front of the camera at Wyoming and South Jefferson. And so I told the responding officer that, hey, look right there, we have cameras. He called into Real Time Crime, Real Time Crime Center. And although the cameras were blinking, which we've all been told if the cameras are blinking, they're working. He was told from, while I was standing there from Real Time Crime Center, that none of those cameras worked. So I recently sent the email to our chief saying what cameras are working, which ones are not. You know, for me specifically in the ninth ward, because we have south crimes by using cameras that work. But it was a shock to me that we had cameras not working. So I have made that request to our chief to get that information. But what my question is for you is that in what I'm reading here, it says that, I guess, section twenty-three says, "It is expected that the division of police will conduct an analysis and produce, produce a plan of all city camera locations and submit the plan to the Board of Aldermen." So I guess I'm just asking, because pulling from our colleague from the twenty-second, I am not a lawyer, but that it is expected that they will produce this plan? Do you feel that it would be better if we said we require them to do the plan? And maybe one of the lawyers can answer, is it is expected? Is that going to get us a plan or not? So my question is, would you be willing to change that to we require them to create a plan?
Well, there's two things happening here, Alderman. Here's how I'm going to respond to you. One is, you're reading from an amendment that's not being discussed right now.
Okay.
So I'm happy to entertain it though, even though it's not relevant to the conversation. The, the idea of a plan rests solely within the control of the Public Safety Department and the Public Safety Director's office. He wants an analysis. He wants a plan. A division of the police department is going to get $2.5 million to which he controls. He doesn't have to spend a dime of it. He can sit on it like he's sitting on the overtime dollars or he can move forward with the plan. In fact, you should probably direct your emails instead to the chief about cameras not working, perhaps to the Public Safety Director's office and ask him to use some of this money when it gets re-appropriated to first start with an analysis and a plan of where to put these cameras and maybe to fix the cameras that aren't working in the ninth ward.
All right, I am, yeah, so again, I'm looking through our drive here and I thought I had the one that was pulled up as committee substitute. You are correct, that was the amended one. So, okay, well, I just, that was my question is the directing them, if we're going to be spending additional funds, directing them to have a plan for, you know, let us know which ones are working, which ones need, you know, every, every year, we put additional funds of our ward capital money into maintenance and fixing these. But it was a surprise when we have blinking cameras and then we're told that those are, actually aren't working. So I will, that was my only question for you. Thank you for the clarification on the committee sub versus the amendment as amended. And that's all I have and I will yield back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth?
Yes, I would also like to know where the cameras are in each ward. I don't know if the other Alder.
Would you like to ask Alderman from the sixteenth to yield a question?
Yes, Alder person from the sixteen will yield for questions.
Alderman from the sixteen, we yield a question to Alderman from the fourth.
I will, Mr. President, yes.
Alderman from the fourth, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman from the sixteenth, is, do you have record as to where the cameras are in everyone's ward?
It's a great question, Alder woman. I don't have, I don't have that. And I can only speak in generalities, having, having had conversations informally with the Real Time Crime Center that cameras are all over. Now, when you utilize ward capital dollars, you know specifically that cameras are being put in your ward. So each Alderman could probably speak to the number of cameras they've purchased over the years utilizing ward capital because those stay ward-specific. But the Real Time Crime Center is constantly Because those stay ward specific. But the Real Time Crime Center is constantly, they don't have a capital, uh, budget. Um, eh, you know, the, the, the police department's budget supplements their operations, but when they purchase cameras to put in areas. Uh, where, where they think they'll be the most effective, they use grants, uh, to, to, to purchase, um, and or police foundation proceeds. To, to purchase those cameras. So cameras are purchased really either two ways, which is either through the, through grants. Uh, that the Real Time Crime Center is getting or contributions. Or when Alderman decide, Alderman or Alderman decide to utilize their ward capital to purchase those. I, I would, I would. I would direct your question, and I will do this for you, Alderman, and try to send it out to, to anyone who's interested, is to figure out. Uh, where all their cameras are, uh, throughout the city in a ward by ward breakdown. Um, I don't, I, I would think if you ask the Real Time Crime Center and the Intelligence Division, they're gonna put cameras where they're the most effective. Uh, where crime is probably, uh, a- at its highest rate. Uh, but that doesn't mean there aren't cameras, uh, anywhere else, cuz I, I think they will tell you, the experts will tell you, you need to be strategic with cameras. And you cast a net wide, cuz you're trying to set a grid. To the Alderman from the third's point, or, or you spoke earlier is, you know, when you set these up at border divisions too. Or, and where, where political jurisdictions and, and geography lines exist, invisible lines exist. Uh, so that you can, if you get a hit from a license plate reader, it's someone entered the city, um, and it's a car that's, that's wanted. Um, for something. But I, I can certainly, to, to make sure I'm, I'm gonna answer your question directly. I don't know exactly the breakdown of where all the cameras are. Um, I think that's probably an involved, uh, question, uh, that has an involved answer. But, um, I'm sure the Real Time Crime Center could get us that information, and I'll, I'll try to track that down for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the sixteenth, I recognize to close on Board Bill two oh six committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I will renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixteenth and seconded by the. Alderman from the twenty-second, that we perfect Board Bill two oh six committee substitute. There's been a request, roll call, man, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus?
Present.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderman Nigrazia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder? Alderman Rice? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer? Alderman Moran?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Present.
Alderman Switzer?
No.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Altenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Peel? Alderman Todd?
Oh.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boy?
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
President.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boy?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Peel?
Aye.
Twenty-one I votes, four no votes, and three voted present.
My vote is staying the motion, Alderman, think and perfected Board Bill number two oh six committee substitute.
That is the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Um, third reading consent.
Board Bill one forty-four, one fifty-two, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one ninety, one ninety-six. One eighty-three, committee sub, one eighty, one eighty-seven, one ninety-nine. Two zero four, two zero five, one ninety-three, one ninety-five, one ninety-eight. Two zero one, two zero nine, two ten, one eighty-one, one ninety-two, eighty-five. And two zero eight.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from tenth, second by Alderman from twenty-second, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our third reading consent calendar, Mountain Club, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderman Nigrazia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Moran?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boy?
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boy?
Aye.
President Reed? Alderman Cone? Twenty-seven I votes.
My vote is staying the motion, Alderman from tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill two zero seven as amended sponsored by Alderman Moran, Alderman Nigrazia, Alderman Gunther. Alderman Rice, Alderman Middlebrook, and Alderman Todd. An ordinance to require food establishment as defined in chapter eleven, I'm sorry, one one point. Four two point zero four zero of the revised code of the City of St. Louis. To make water and low-fat milk, the default beverage options offered with food establishment, children's meals.
Uh, Alderman from the eleventh, we recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill two oh seven as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to third read and finally pass Board Bill two oh seven as amended.
Move by Alderman from eleventh and attain a second on that.
Okay.
Uh, second about Alderman from the sixth, uh, Alderman from left, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanna remind everyone, uh, that, um, some folks, some folks that we, uh, respect, support this bill. Um, and think that it is a good idea, uh, for the children in our community. Um, again, this is not a, um. Uh, this is in no way a mandate. Um, parents can still order, uh, what they would like. Um, and that we did add juice, um, to this when we were working with the, uh, beverage and restaurant industries. Um, I also wanted to clarify one thing, uh, we have worked with the Health Department on this. And, uh, Mr. Craig Schmidt, um, wanted to just clarify that this will not be a checkoff, um, in the inspection process. But, um, they will know to look out for it, and that the Health Department is working with. A variety of health industry, um, stakeholders to make sure restaurants know about it and are educated and have the time to amend anything they might need. Um, with that, I'll entertain any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third? I just wanna have a roll call. I'm starting to stick with my know on this, so I'd like a roll call on. Alright, any further discussion? Alderman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, if they are Alderman from the eleventh would yield, please.
From the eleventh, will you have a question from Alderman?
Yes, certainly.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Um, yes, Alderman, what does the term default beverage mean, option?
It just means like if you're, uh, going through a drive-through or you're looking at a kid's menu, a lot of times they group. Uh, you know, you can get your cheeseburger, your fries, and then, you know, it comes with a small soda. Um, and some other sugary drinks. So this would default to mean that, that when they're grouped together. And presented as a children's menu, that it would be water, uh, low-fat milk or juice, um, under the six ounces.
Okay, so, I agree with that. I just really do like, I don't see it in here defined. And I just would really, uh, request in the future when we do things like this, we just define that so that people know what that is. Cuz I agree, uh, soda should be something that's kept fur- as far away from our children as possible. Even fruit drinks are actually not that great when people start looking at the sugar content. It's not really what you think it is, okay? It's not real fruit drinks. It's a lot more sugar, so. Um, that's kind of iffy right there. Um, the water and the milk, I think, is a, a much better thing to offer children. I still drink milk. I don't even drink coffee. I'm sixty-five years old. My mother wouldn't let us have coffee. And so, my sister and I both still drink milk, um, and not much fruit juice. Okay, so that's just my comment. I wish we would just define things, so when we say default beverage, what that means.
I agree, and, um, this has certainly been a learning process on that, because I agree, there's been a little confusion about default and what that meant. And, um, I could not agree with you more, and I appreciate you asking me, uh, that, um, I wish I drank more milk and less coffee, but here I.
Then I got through law school and I still don't drink, uh, uh, coffee. I think that I am one of the few people in the world that got through law school and I don't drink coffee, okay?
That's impressive. I see a few lawyers on the Zoom nodding their heads.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, Alderman from the eleventh, you recognize to close on Board Bill two oh seven as amended.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Um, I, uh, appreciate, um, everyone's work on this, and I would, I hope that, uh. Sorry, my kid was talking to me. Um, I hope that I can receive favorable consideration on this bill. Thank you.
Okay, uh, it's been moved by Alderman from eleventh, second by Alderman at sixth. That we third read and finally pass Board Bill two oh seven as amended, Mountain Club, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus?
I just got a call from Alderman Martin's kids saying, don't vote for this, but I'm voting for it anyway. I.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Page?
Aye.
Alderman Nigrazia?
Aye.
Alderman Colder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice? Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Moran?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Mohammed?
Aye.
Alderman Boy?
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro?
No.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Clark? I'm sorry, was that Alderman Cone?
Yes, Alderman Cone is an aye.
Thank you. Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boy?
Aye.
President Reed?
Uh, aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Twenty-six I votes and two no votes.
My vote is staying motion, Alderman from the eleventh and third read and finally pass Board Bill two oh seven as amended. Report of engrossments.
Board Bill one forty-four, one fifty-two, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one ninety, one ninety-six, one eighty-three. Committee sub, one eighty, one eighty-seven, one ninety-nine, two zero four, two zero five, one ninety-three, one ninety-five. One ninety-eight, two zero one, two zero nine, two ten, one eighty-one, one ninety-two, eighty-five, two zero eight. Two zero seven as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix this signature here to, to the end that these may become lost. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I had a, my hand up because, uh, I want to suspend the rules to introduce Resolution two twenty-two, um, from the floor. If there's appropriate time now, it's first reading resolutions.
Yep, it's been moved by Alderman from the first, entertain a second on that motion.
Correct.
Second by Alderman from twenty-seventh, that we spend the rules for purposes of introducing Resolution two twenty-two in a discussion. It's been moved and seconded, that we spend our rules. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Negracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Moran.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderman.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Evans. I'm sorry, Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed. Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Twenty-eight aye votes.
By vote, staying the motion of the whole room from the first, and spend the rules for purposes of introducing Resolution two twenty-two. Madam Clerk, please place Resolutions twenty-two twenty-two on the first reading resolutions count.
So noted.
Uh, first reading resolution.
Resolution two twenty-two sponsored by Alderman Tyus investigating the merits of proposition R.
Uh, Alderman from the first, you recognize on first reading Resolution two twenty-two.
Mr. President, first of all, I want to apologize to you, because in Personnel Committee yesterday, uh, you talked to us about the importance of not having hearings during our down tally, tally, but, uh, so we have an election coming up. Uh, we have let a proposition go by before that didn't get ma- vetted at the Board of Alderman. I think that all things like this should be vetted on both sides, pro and con, so I am looking to send this, uh, resolution to committee. Um, and I do want the resolution, uh, uh, to be read, and I'm gonna, uh, kind of ask the Alderman from the tenth, if he would please, 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 if he doesn't have the hearing, if somebody else, if I send it to his committee, would he have somebody else's vice chair, somebody have hearings on this, so?
Uh, Madam Clerk, please read resolution.
Resolution two twenty-two investigating the merits of proposition R. Whereas, as per the Saint Louis City Charter five, Article five, Initiative, Section one, used authority, or I'm sorry, used authorized, the people shall have power at their option to proposed ordinances, including ordinances proposing amendments to this charter and, and adopt the same at the polls with the same effects as if adopted by the Board of Alderman and approved by the mayor, such polls are being known as initiative. It shall be exercised as herein after provided, subject to the provision of this charter. And whereas, as per the Saint Louis City Charter, Article four, Initiative, Section four, Certification of Petition, Submission of Proposed Ordinances to Voters States, if the Board of Election Commissioners find that the petition with supplements, if any is sufficient, it shall forthwith certify that fact, together with a copy of the petition, omitting signatures to the Board of Alderman, and whereas the, the city charter goes on to state in pertinent part, unless the proposed ordinance is without amendment, adopted and approved by the mayor or adopted without amendment over his veto within sixty days after the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman. Next, after said certification, said Board of Election Commissioners shall, shall thereupon provide for submitting said proposed ordinance in its original form to the voters at the first election, at which submission may lawfully be had. And whereas, on or about September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, the members of the Board of Alderman received from the Board's clerk of correspondence from the Board of Election Commission regarding the sufficiency of the citizen initiative petition known as proposition R. And whereas, proposition R is proposed ordinance that seeks to amend the, the Saint Louis City Charter and propo- and proposes to, um, among other things, change redistricting without any proof that the proposed changes are not already being done or would be improvement to the method currently done by the Board of Alderman, City of Saint Louis, and to seek is permanently embed into our city charter, the, the very problematic, unfair, and undemocratic ordinance known as proposition. And whereas, in November twentieth, twenty, in No- November two thousand and twenty, a citizen initiative position, I mean, petition known as ordinance proposition D was passed and implemented the same month for election filings that occurred a few days later, and elections that occurred in March and April of two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas, property, proposition D has caused some very undemocratic outcomes, such as candidates getting more than fifty percent of the vote in March two thousand and twenty-one municipal city election, and winning by a margin of hundreds of votes, only to have the losing candidate from March two thousand and twenty-one election win by less than twenty vote, voted in April two thousand and twenty-one election, or in cases where, uh, where there were only two candidates, one candidate getting over twen- seventy percent of the vote, and other getting less than thirty percent of the vote in March twenty twenty-one election, and still having, the two candidates have to run, run another election against one another. And whereas, proposition D has caused some other problems, such as forcing candidates to seek election as a nonpartisan election, only to be elected by the Board of Alderman and declared themselves a partisan candidate such as proper, such as a Democrat, which seems to be a fraud upon voters forced by proposition D. And whereas, property, proposition D was not properly vetted before this esteemed Board of Alderman, and has been shown to have many loopholes and faulty out, outcomes, because the legisla- legislation did not properly address other ordinances and the prevailing city charter. And whereas, it is important that the pro- proposed amendments to the Charter of the City of Saint Louis, which would be implemented by proposition R, be vetted thoroughly by its, by this esteemed board, as would any proposed ordinance or charter amendment proposed by the Board of Alderman, would be, would be properly vetted. Now therefore, be, be resolved that this honorable Board of Alderman require that the committee of the Board of Alderman have a hearing or hearings to examine and vet the proposed city ordinances and charter changes known as pro or which is being brought through the initiative process, and the city will have an election on said proposed change in April two thousand and twenty-two. Introduce this eleven day in March, two thousand and twenty-two by the Honorable Sh- Sharon Tyus, Alderman of the first ward.
Uh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, um, I wanted to, I would like to send this.
Let me, yeah, you asked a question. Hold on a second. Alderman from the tenth, would you, uh, would your committee be open to having permanent meetings concerning?
Uh, certain, certainly, uh, I will, uh, attempt to do that if myself or the vice chair, Mr. Boyd, we should be able to handle this in, in one way or another.
All right, thanks. There's your answer. Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman from the tenth. You rock. Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I've, I've moved to send, uh, Resolution two two two. Also known as Room two two two, if you're old enough to. I just took that. That's something that Alderman from the tenth would say, okay? Um, I'd like to send that to the Legislative Committee.
Second.
Moved by Alderman from the first, second by Alderman from the twenty-second, that we send Resolution two 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 to legislation. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution two 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 to legislation.
So noted.
Second. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
That's the end of first reading resolution.
Second reading.
Report from the Streets Committee regarding Resolution one seventy-six.
Alderman from the first. Who's handling this report?
I, I, I'm sorry, I was, I was talking, but it was muted. I always mute myself as soon as I finish talking, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, I need to.
Okay, okay, um, let's see, where's my report? Here it is. Mr. President, members of the board, um, you should have in your Google Docs, uh, uh, a report from the Streets Committee. Uh, we did have a joint hearing with the Legislative Committee regarding the vacancy to fill the office of Ward Alderman in the twenty-eighth ward. Um, we had some very good conversations with both the direct Republican and, uh, Democratic Street, I'm, I'm sorry, Democratic Election, uh, Board members, and they came over in February, and they had determined that they were going to have a mesh of Proposition D and, uh, city charter, and they were gonna, uh, other than city charter required very specific things that had, that were very partisan. And they somehow came up with this thing that they were going to do a nonpartisan election, and so they came and they answered questions, um, but uh, one of the things we found out in our, uh, hearings was that they had not had a, um, meeting of the Board of Election Commission. And so, uh, I did talk to the members, some members of the Board of Election Commission, and after hearing our, um, hearings, and not only did I talk to them, I talked to the, what is now the Democratic nominee for the twenty-eighth ward. Uh, there's a Republican nominee for the twenty-eighth ward. Um, I talked to many people across the city who watched these hearings, and on, uh, February twenty-eighth, which was a Monday, the Board of Election Commissioners had a meeting and reversed their decision. And so, in, uh, April, in the special election, uh, in the ward twenty-eight, it will be a partisan, uh, election. So that was the outcome of, of our hearings. Uh, if you read the newspaper, they didn't say that, um, but that is what happened. And, um, the, the, the joint committees were very good. We asked a lot of questions, so just wanted to do a report, because it really says, uh, that we should have hearings, but we already had the hearings, so I felt, and then we did vote to pass it out with the DuPont's, uh, recommendation, but I did want the board to know that it's already been done. They are having, uh, a partisan election as they should under the, um, uh, the city charter, and I was pleased with, uh, our hearings, and it goes to show that even if you don't have a board bill, if you have really good hearings under resolution, um, the board has powers under our resolutions.
Now, I was muted. Yeah, Madam Chair, to you and all the committee members, I just want to thank you and congratulations on a job well done. You, you turned the tide on this and, and was heard and got some good work done, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a good committee, and so is the Legislative Committee, and a lot of the people sit on both committees, so it was wonderful.
Excellent, excellent, excellent work, though. Thanks again. Anything further on this matter before we move forward, Alderman from the first?
No, sir. No, sir, thank you.
All right, um, Madam Clerk.
Report from the Transportation and Commerce Committee related to the Airport Arts Advisory Committee. Mayoral appointments for, for Mr. Gregory Glor, Ms. Kiku Abada, Ms. Roseanne Weiss, Ms. Stephanie Whedon Smith, Mr. Carlos Womora, and Ms. Lois Ingram.
Ald- Alderman of the twenty-fifth, you recognize on mayor's appointments to the Airport Arts Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Transportation and Commerce Committee met this week and reviewed the, uh, backgrounds of each of the nominees, and, uh, made recommendation to pass them out with favorable consideration to the, uh, Board as a whole.
All right, uh, would you like to make a motion to adopt?
I, thank you. I make a motion that we adopt the mayor's nominees to the Airport Arts Advisory Committee.
All right, moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, and I think it was the Alderman.
Second, fourteen.
Alderman from the eighth, and Alderman from the fourteenth. Any further discussion? Alderman from the first.
Um, if the Alderman from the twenty-fifth would yield.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you yield a question?
I will.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
First, uh, I, I actually have two, uh, nominations. Are we doing, uh, two A, the one that has six instead of seven, because I think one of the people withdrew? Is that what we're doing?
There were actually two, uh, of the appointment, uh, original appointments that had been withdrawn, and then there was one who you, you actually introduced earlier, uh, in the, the meeting this morning, uh, when it was morning. So, uh, there's currently one, two, three, four, five.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, we can't see your video. I don't know what's, I don't know what happened.
Uh, it's, it's showing. I, I see myself.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's back now. Go ahead.
Oh, we're, we're point six right now, not seven, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. If you look in the, uh, Google Docs, one says two airport advisory committee and has seven, and that one says two A, this has six. So I just wanted to make sure we were passing out the correct one.
It's the one with the six.
Okay, um, and, okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any further questions. I do want to say, I want to thank Alderman from the twenty-fifth and the mayor. Um, I had some problems with the original appointments, um, because they had nobody from North Saint Louis. Um, I had three people from Saint Louis County. Unfortunately, we had a big mix-up with the second person that's from, is from North Saint Louis. I do look forward to us getting another appointee from North Saint Louis. We do actually have a city ordinance that requires the mayor, and all mayors, not just this one, when they're making an appointment over three people, that they make sure all parts of the city is recognized. I've been saying that for a lot of years, um, and they made me dig deep. Actually, we've had three or four, uh, ordinances that say that. So it didn't just start with one mayor, another one at different times throughout the city, back from the forties, when the Italians got, I mean, when the Irish got elected, they didn't want to put the certain people from the heels on the committee, so many, many years ago, they started passing ordinance requiring the mayors to be fair in their, uh, their appointments on boards and commissions. And the last one we did was, uh, back, I don't know, in the seventies or something like that, and it basically said if the mayor appoints more than three people to any commission or board, that it has to be fair. And so the first set of nominations that came over here, I was really outraged, because it was three people from the county. A couple of people from South Saint Louis, one person from the central west end, and no people from North Saint Louis. And I, for those of you who have, uh, uh, served with me on this board, uh, you, I said it with Alderman, I'm sorry, with the mayor who was slay, I said it with the mayor who was, uh, cruising, and I'll say it with the mayor who was Mayor Jones now. Send over fair, uh, committees, uh, that are appoint people from all parts of the city. Um, and I would be equally outraged if it was all North Saint Louis and not South Saint Louis. The whole, the best way that you get a good committee is to have input from a many different kind of sources as possible, Hispanic, Asian, uh, gay, uh, uh, male, female, black, uh, those are, that's how you get a good input about your boards and commissions, so you don't tend to be so focused on just what one group of people, uh, thinks. And so I do want to thank the mayor's from, for withdrawing some of her nominations, and looking forward to having, uh, better nominations sent over in the first place that are representative of our entire city, because we have really great people in our city. And, um, so this is what the City of Saint Louis looks more like, what the City of Saint Louis looks like. Although I will say that I got a notice from a man saying we don't have enough men on the committees, on this particular committee, and I pointed out to him, if you look at all the other committees in the city, there's more than. on this particular committee, and I pointed out to him, if you look at all the other committees in the city, there's more than more than enough men represented on there. Thank you very much, and I do support the nominations.
All right, thank you, all the one, it's been moved on from twenty-fifth, second about all the one from the eighth and the fourteenth, that we accept the mayor's appointments to the Airport Arts Advisory Committee, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let's extend a second reading of resolutions.
Miss Ling is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
We have none.
Further announcements. We, were all the Aldermen in attendance today, I believe they were at some point in time. Madam Clerk, that was a question?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you, Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion to recess.
Mister President, like Alderman from the twenty-sixth has her hand up.
Oh, I didn't see, Alderman from twenty-sixth, sorry, thank you, I didn't see that.
Thank you, thank you, Mister President, I just had a really quick announcement while we're on break, even though I see you're not, we're going to come back. But I wanted to make sure before we went on that everyone knew to make sure their constituents know about the Steinberg Pavilion Activity Survey that's out on the Forest Park Forever dot org website, we want to make sure that we have voices heard from all over the city. Again, this is the Steinberg Pavilion and Rick Design Projects that are thinking about reimagining that space over there in Forest Park, amazing space and making it better. So you can go to the Forest Park Forever dot org website and go slash Steinberg Project and go and fill out that survey yourself and share it with all your constituents again, so that we can make sure that the redirection and reimagining of that project is very inclusive and welcoming for our constituents all over the city, thank you so much for letting me announce it.
All right, thank you, Alderman from twenty-sixth, Alderman from nineteenth.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. I'd like to recognize the Divine Nine. I don't think that we give them enough kudos for all that they do to support our communities with all the service that's provided by the various fraternities and sororities. And most especially, I want to give kudos to the AKAs, because they have recently, in the last four weeks, they have done, that I've tracked, six extensive community service projects that included collecting for the Sean High School, an enormous program at Harris Stowe, providing assistance to food giveaways, all kinds of things, but the Divine Nine is all, they are really a very, very, very good resource that helps us give better quality of life initiatives in the right way. And I and and I'm going to give a shout out to my nineteenth ward, the Sigmas, they have they the guys have decided to put their home here. This was the former home of the Deltas for a number of years, the nineteenth ward. And I just want to say thank you, because we don't recognize all that we get from those fraternities and sororities. I'm done, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman from twenty-seven.
I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Howard University that came into our city last week. And they came in and did community service for Sumner High School and Annie Malone's Children and Family Institution. And so those young people visited some sites in Saint Louis and they had a great time. They did a lot of great projects within those two places, at Summer and at Annie Malone, so I just want to recognize those students, they left yesterday. And we appreciate them coming in and doing their community service with us, that shows what HBCUs can do within their own communities, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from twenty-sixth.
Mister President, members of the board, I don't know how I forgot this, especially with us passing the resolution, and bank Monday, you all, don't forget, is three one four day. So make sure there's a coalition that's out here working hard with STL Made and B Marcel, Jamie Valentine, those with three one four ish, and a whole host of other people, of course, Young D. They put together a host of events. I'm a thing going on all over the city to celebrate three one four day, make sure you hashtag three one four day, and you can go to three one four day dot org to get a list of all the events that'll be going on, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth, we're back to you on your motion.
Are we, you mentioned recess, is the recess adjournment, sir?
Thank you.
Okay.
Recess until the.
Well, make sure we get it right.
Twenty, twenty.
I move that we adjourn to March twenty-fifth at ten AM by Zoom.
All right, move by on from tenth, second by on from twenty-second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, all right, see you guys on twenty-fifth.